Good morning. Would you like to call this meeting to order? Today is Tuesday, May 17, 2011. It's 9:00 a.m. We're at the Palm Coast Community Center for the regularly scheduled meeting of the Palm Coast Mayor and City Council. Would you please rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Mayor Ness.
Here.
Vice Mayor Meeker.
Here.
Councilmember DiStefano.
Here.
Councilmember Lewis.
Here.
Councilmember Mormon.
Here.
Mayor, all members are present.
Thank you very much. First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the May 3 city council meeting and the May 10 city council workshop. Are there any additions, corrections, or is there a motion to approve?
Move/Adoption.
Second.
Move in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries without objection. Agenda item number two, proclamation recognizing May as Drug Court Month. Mr. Meeker.
Whereas drug courts are an effective tool for reducing substance abuse and crime in our criminal justice system, and whereas for over 20 years, more than 2,500 operational drug courts have been restoring lives, reuniting families, and making communities across the nation safe, and whereas drug courts provide focus and leadership for community-wide partnerships, bringing together public safety and public health professionals in the fight against drug abuse and criminality, and whereas research shows that drug courts are demonstrably effective and significantly improve substance abuse treatment outcomes, substantially reduce drug abuse and crime, and do so at a lower cost than any other justice strategy, and whereas the judges, attorneys, treatment and rehabilitation professionals, law enforcement and community supervision personnel, researchers, educators, and others dedicated to drug courts and similar types of treatment programs are healing families and communities across the country, and now therefore be it resolved that the Palm Coast Mayor and City Council recognizes the successful work of the practitioners and participants of drug court programs to reduce the impact of drug abuse on our community and hereby proclaims May 2011 as Drug Court Month in Palm Coast, and urge all citizens to recognize the significant contributions of drug courts and congratulate this year's Flagler County Adult Drug Court graduates adopted the 17th day of May 2011.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Mike Greenear. I'm the Drug Court Coordinator here in Flagler County. And drug courts do work. We just had a steering committee meeting last week. We have some relatively new statistics. The recidivism rate for people that have been arrested for drug charges nationally, the recidivism rate is about 75 percent. Seventy-five percent of the people come back into the criminal justice system. But we just did our stats, and 75 percent of our people have received no new drug charges since we started the program four and a half years ago. So it's working very, very well. We presently have about 35 participants, and we hold drug courts on Thursday, and I expect that we're going to have another four or five probably on Thursday. So as people are hearing more and more about drug court and looking at the alternative to drug court, i.e. prison, they're taking drug court. It is a voluntary program. People have to voluntarily commit to the program. But when you're looking at, especially if a person may have been through violation probation a couple of times, the judge who's now running drug court, Judge Zembrano, is not going to let you go back into probation. You're either going to prison, or you're going to do drug court and hopefully get help for your problem. And that's what people have been taking. And that's what drug court is supposed to be doing, is targeting those high-risk, high-needs people, and that's where you get your best results and your best bang for your buck, if you will. So I want to thank the council, Mr. Mayor, for recognizing drug courts. And as I said, drug courts really do work. If you want to know a little bit more about drug courts, you can also go online to AllRise.org. Allrise, as in somebody enters a courtroom, Allrise. Allrise.org is the National Association of Drug Court Professionals, and is a wealth of information about drug courts and what we do. Again, I thank you very much for proclaiming May as Drug Court Month. Thank you. I just might add that it's been my privilege to attend several of the drug court graduations. If you haven't done so, avail yourself of the opportunity. It's a very moving experience to hear these individuals stand up and talk about their experience in the program and how it literally has been a life-changing experience. So if you get the opportunity, attend. Agenda item number three, proclamation on Aging Resource Center. Mrs. DiStefano.
I think I'm the senior, maybe not. You know, aging is something that we're all doing at the same time. And those young'uns that are out there, they're going to realize they're going to be up here one day. Whereas the city of Palm Coast is a community that includes a great number of healthy, active citizens aged 60 and older, and whereas the older adults of Palm Coast are the roots from which the community grows, who bestow gifts of wisdom and insight upon younger generations, and strengthen the bonds between neighbors to create a better place to live. Whereas our society can be enhanced by older adults aging peacefully in their communities, and whereas the older adults in Palm Coast should be commended for their role in creating and bolstering the fiber of our community and the nation. Whereas our community can provide recognition and respect by enriching the quality of life for older Americans by increasing their opportunities to remain in their communities as an active, engaged citizens, providing services, technologies, and support systems that allow seniors to foster and maintain connections within the community, and emphasizing the value of elders by publicly recognizing their contributions to the diversity, strength, and unity for our community. Now therefore be it resolved that the Palm Coast Mayor and City Council do hereby proclaim May 2011 to the Older Americans Month. City Council urges every citizen to take time this month to honor the older adults, the professionals, family members, and volunteers who care for them. Signed, the 17th day of May. John Ness, Mayor. Trish?
Thank you for inviting us this morning. We at... Patricia Griffin, sorry. We at Elder Source gladly accept this on behalf of all the senior citizens in Palm Coast, Flagler County, and throughout the state of Florida. Flagler Senior Services is an important organization here, and they're a wonderful group. We were so lucky to be paired with them, and hopefully we'll be working with them long into the future, maintaining seniors' independence in their homes and in other facilities. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Agenda item number four, presentation on city budget and finances. Mr. Landon, would you like to introduce Mr. Brad?
Yes, Mayor, City Council. It's starting that time of year again. City staff at department level right now are all busily preparing their budget. Ray says they're already behind, but that's pretty typical. At the last workshop, we talked about how at your next workshop, it's going to be an all-day event. We're going to talk about goals and objectives for the next year, which will then lead into budget discussions. And this year, we are anticipating a number of difficult choices that you'll be facing. One of the things that you asked was to have Ray, as we start preparing for those discussions, kind of go over as simple as possible, public finance at the local level, in particular of finances here and at Palm Coast. So this is intended to be a series of, say, educational informational-type briefings. These are not intended at this time to get into the details of the budget. I've already gotten some feedback from some of the council members as far as, well, we need to make sure we address this or that and given issues. As we go through this, and you have questions, people ask you questions maybe, if you'll contact me or Ray, then in future presentations, we'll make sure we plug those type of issues or those type of questions into the presentation. So with that, Ray, simple, right?
As simple as we can make it.
The point is, it's a very complicated subject, and so it is difficult to make it simple.
I'm already confused at the first slide.
And the city manager asked me to keep these down to about an hour and 15 minutes each. Something about do presentations similar to the way the planners do it.
Dig, dig, dig.
Later, Ray.
Later. As the city manager said, this is going to be just kind of a overview. I'm going to go through it fairly quickly. If you've got any questions, feel free to ask. And I've got basically three parts set up so far, and we will go through those over the next three council meetings. Today, we're going to talk just a little background on some of the regulations and talk about a little terminology that we use, or that you will see in the news probably in the very near future if you haven't already seen it. Next council meeting, we will talk about revenues, which will actually get into some of my presentation that I do at the Citizens Academy, which is kind of what got this started, I think. And then in part three, on June 21st, we'll talk more about the individual funds that we have in the city, what kind of revenues each one of them get, and what those are for. And as the city manager said, if you've got any issues that you want me to address, just send me an email, or the public can also, at arbred@palmcoastgov.com. And I will either work them into one of these sessions that we've already got, if it fits in there, or we'll add more sessions to cover those. So we'll get into today's on the regulations and terminology. A lot of people, or not a lot, but some people have gotten up at various council meetings over the years and complained about our system of accounting in government. And some of them seem to, some of them have come right out and said, and some of them have just kind of intimated that we do it the way we do it to keep everybody confused and so we can kind of hide things from the public. And that's really not the way it is. I would make it a whole lot simpler if it was up to me, but unfortunately, it is not up to me. Our primary rule-making body in governmental accounting is known as the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, or affectionately known as GASB. And they are located up in Norwalk, Connecticut. They are the ones that actually issue the accounting rules. They do it through what's known as statements. Before the statements come out, they actually put out an exposure draft, which allows us to comment about their proposed rule changes. Sometimes they listen to us more often than not. They do not. They just do it the way they want to do it. So the statements come out, and then after the statements come out and everybody's thoroughly confused about it, then a couple of years later, they will put out a technical bulletin to explain how they really wanted all this done. Just to give you an idea, back in 1999, Statement Number 34 came out, which was a major change in governmental accounting. The latest one we've got now, about 12 years later, is Statement 61. So over 12 years, we've had about 27 new rules come out from the GASB, so an average about two rule changes a year that they put out. Other regulatory authorities. We have to follow a lot of rules and regulations that are put out by the federal government. Of course, we deal with payroll taxes. When we issue debt, we have to follow certain rules in order to make sure that the bonds that we issue remain as non-taxable bonds. If we do something wrong, they could be considered taxable bonds, which could impact the city. We have grants. We have certain rules we have to follow, both in accounting for them, reporting, and our annual report that we have to do. And you know, we've actually hired consultants to handle a lot of the paperwork as far as reporting to the various agencies. However, we still have to account for it properly in the books. These last couple here are new things. 1099 reporting. 1099s are what we have to issue to individuals that we pay over $600 to in a year, in a given year. Congress changed the rules on that and said we had to issue it to everybody that we paid $600 to, including corporations and everything else, which we hadn't had to do in the past. And this was going to cause our number of 1099s to go from, I think we did about 40 last year, and we were going to have to start issuing hundreds and maybe even up into the thousands a year, which would be very costly to do. Would anybody care to take a guess where the legislation that approved that was included? That was in the Health Care Reform Bill. Buried in hundreds of pages of the Health Care Reform Bill was this 1099 requirement. Well, when we found out about it, some of the organizations, governmental organizations, really got, after Congress, and this actually got repealed about two or three weeks ago. So we don't have to deal with that one. The 3 percent withholding that I've got listed here is something that requires governments to withhold 3 percent of all the payments that they make over $10,000 to vendors during the year. And this was going into effect January 1 of 2012. And just blanket across the board, if you had a contract for $3 million, when you paid them, you had to withhold 3 percent. Actually, yesterday afternoon, I saw a news, one of my daily newsletters that I get in an email, and this has now been postponed to January of 2013. So hopefully, this will get repealed also, because this has the potential to actually increase our costs, because these contractors and stuff are probably just going to add 3 percent to their estimate. So again, our governmental organizations, such as the Government Finance Officers Association, are lobbying to get this repealed. And then, of course, another regulatory authority that we all know and love the most probably is the state. In our accounting, we've got rules that are in state statute. The Department of Revenue puts out rules for us. The Auditor General has rules that we have to follow. Just some of the ones that you probably are more familiar with, the truth and millage, which is also known as TRIM. That's the procedures that we have to follow when we're going through the budget process, when you're setting the millage rate and you're adopting the budget. There's a specific set of rules that we have to follow. Again, grant compliance. We have state grants. And up till just four or five years ago, they had a totally different set of rules than the federal government did. They finally, about four or five years ago, said, well, just mirror the federal government rules, and that way it'll make it a little bit easier on people, because then they're not having to deal with two totally different sets of rules. And then we have to do annual reporting. We have annual reporting requirements. In addition to the audit, we have to file a report with the state that's in a whole different format than the audit is, even though we send them a copy of our audit report. I just stuck our accounting on one of our account numbers on there. This is the account number that we have to use in order to be able to track stuff in all the different formats that we have to report these things at different times during the year. And actually, all those numbers actually mean something to us. Now, what we use in governmental accounting is known as fund accounting. And fund accounting is a system for segregating financial resources to ensure and demonstrate legal compliance with restrictions or other special purposes. This is not anything really new. Fund accounting came into existence back in the early 1900s, because there was a lot of complaints about corruption and illegal activity with governments spending money in ways that they shouldn't be spending it, or spending it on things that they shouldn't be spending it on. So fund accounting kind of came into existence and has evolved over time. So what is a fund? Now, this one, I'm going to make it a little complicated, because, you know, I don't want y'all to think my job's too easy. A fund is a physical and accounting entity with a self-balancing set of accounts, recording cash and other financial resources, together with all related liabilities and residual equities or balances and changes therein, which are segregated for the purpose of conducting specific activities or attaining certain objectives in accordance with the special regulations, restrictions, or limitations. Funds are divided into various types according to the legal restrictions imposed upon them or by their uses.
My middle school teacher would like to talk to whoever wrote that first sentence.
You sure Mr. Reichman didn't have...
Poor Bill.
Wow, we've got everybody so far today.
In a nutshell, what that means is, a fund is really its own little separate entity. It's got its own cash account. It's got its own liability accounts. It's got its own revenue and expense accounts, and that's really what it means. The last sentence, the short sentence, is really kind of the key to it, is we set up funds in order to keep the uses and designations separated. It just makes it easier to do. Some of the different types of funds that we have, these are actually all the different funds that are included in governmental accounting. They're called governmental funds, and these are the ones that are the general fund, which is really the only fund that's required in government. Each entity has to have a general fund. They do not have to have any other of these funds. Special revenue funds, which we do have, a capital project fund, we do have debt service funds, and permanent funds. We do not use those types of funds. And we will get into the individual funds in part three of the presentation in a few weeks. Proprietary funds are the business-type funds. Enterprise funds, which get the majority of their revenue from fees and charges that are charged outside the governmental entity to customers. And internal service funds are business-type operations, but their fees are charged to internal departments, for the most part. They can have outside revenues also. And then fiduciary funds, there's two types of those. Trust funds, which would be like pension funds, and agency funds. Now, as I said, fund accounting started back in the early 1900s, and back then, every time they set up a fund, they opened up a new checking account. And there's actually some smaller governments today that may only have four, or five, six funds, that probably have a separate checking account for each one of those funds. We have about 30 funds total at the city of Palm Coast. We do not have separate checking accounts. We have one checking account, and we use what is called pooled cash and investments. And by using those, that account number, we're able to keep all of that separate, so each fund has its own cash balance. We know how much cash each fund has at any given time, and all of the expenses and revenues are all tracked separate based on that account number. Now, this is something that we talk about on a regular basis. However, if you look up there, at all those different types of fund balances, you do not see the word "reserve" up there anywhere. City manager made me use that term, because I won't blame it on him, because that's the term everybody seems to kind of understand. And we know what we're talking about. In governmental funds, we actually have five different categories of fund balance. We have non-spendable, and that is things like if we have an inventory, that's something out there that we can't really go spend. You can't go spend inventory. It's not cash. But it's an asset. It shows up as part of our fund balance, but we can't spend it. Restricted are types of funds that have an external restriction, either through contractual obligation, or through, like the state legislature has, you know, put a restriction on it, like impact fees, those types of things. Those are restricted funds. Committed are things that you, as a city council, have earmarked money for, and you've taken some type of official action and said, we're going to use this money to do this. In fact, we're going to probably bring back a resolution sometime between now and the end of September to formally adopt the uses for the disaster reserve fund. That was set up, it was understood what it was going to be used for, but there was never any official action taken. And so for, in order for us to be able to show that as committed funds on the annual financial statement, we'll need formal action from y'all. So we will be bringing something back before the end of September to do that. Assigned, this could even be done at the city manager's level, or even a department head level, if he designates a department head to do it. And this is just, say, we've got a project that we need, maybe we've got a contract out there, and we need to make sure we've got money set aside for that. You know, we can just do it as assigned. And then unassigned, that is usually the one that is our reserve. Whenever you talk about reserve, whenever at the end of the year, we say our reserve is 10 percent, or this year it was like 9.8 percent, or something like that, that's the number we're talking about. And that's the money that doesn't have any encumbrances on it. It's there, it can be used for anything. I will tell you that sometimes people come up to me during the year, like right now, and say, well, what's our reserve? And I will usually qualify my answer, because I have no idea what our reserve is at this point in time. The reason for that is, we do not track these things during the year. We only break these out at the end of the year into these various categories. It's tough to do during the year, because we may have projects that we're in the middle of, and we don't know exactly where they are, how much work's actually been done. So it's really hard for us to go, well, this much is assigned, and this much is committed, and all that kind of stuff during the year, because we only have one fund balance account. So I can tell you how much cash we got, and I can give you an idea of how much reserve we actually have, free unassigned fund balance we've got, but it's not going to be totally accurate, you know, during the year. And then in the enterprise funds, we've got a whole different couple of categories. We've got restricted and unrestricted. And restricted are things like our bond funds, or impact fee funds, and then unrestricted is everything else. So we only have two categories in the enterprise funds. Okay, just some terms that are in the news lately. Recently, our bonds were downgraded from double A minus down to A plus by one of the rating agencies, and they talked about our debt coverage ratios. And some questions were asked, you know, exactly what is that? So I thought I would just take a quick look at that. This is a report that's actually in our annual audit in the statistical section. And basically, what all's we're doing is, we're taking our revenues or utility service charges, less our operating expenses. We have a rate stabilization fund. In 2007, we actually put some money into the rate stabilization fund. We've got the net amount, and then we've got our total debt, and this coverage ratio is how many times this would cover this debt. And you can see we're like, in '07, we're almost one and three-quarters times that would cover the debt for that year. In 2010, we actually had to take about a million and a half out of the rate stabilization fund. You can also notice our debt went up, because this was the first year we paid principal on the 2007 bonds. The first couple of years, we only paid interest on those. So our debt went up. Our revenues have been coming down, and would have been actually less than '09. than '09 if we hadn't have taken money out of the rate stabilization fund. So, our coverage ratio is 1.34, down considerably from '07. It would've been about 1.17 if we hadn't have used the rate stabilization money. So that's what had the rating agency concerned, and this is something we will have to continue to monitor. If the revenues don't pick up through growth, uh, you know, then at some point down the road, we may have to look at, you know, doing a rate increase. But right now, we're just, you know, keeping an eye on it, because we're, uh, we're still okay right now. Uh, we have, within our bond document, we have what's called covenants, and we have to give assurances to the bond purchasers, the bondholders, that we will maintain a coverage ratio of at least 1.15. So we're down really close to that right now. Uh, so, again, that, you know, may, you know, cause us to have to take some kind of action in the future. A couple of other things that have been really hot topics lately in the news with the legislature this year, the Florida retirement system was a big, big issue. So I'll talk just a second about the difference between a defined benefit plan and defined contribution pension plan. Defined benefit plan is a plan that where the employee works there, they get certain credit for years of service, certain percentage per year of service, and when they retire, the government says, "We will pay you, this, we'll give you this much money every year for your retirement," you know, "the whole time you live." Uh, that's a defined benefit plan. Defined contribution plan, which is what the city of Palm Coast pretty much has, there are a couple of exceptions, and we'll talk about those in a few weeks when we get more into the, uh, the various funds, and we'll talk about the pension plan a little bit more. But the majority of the city employees are on a defined contribution plan, which means the city puts a certain amount in every year for those employees. It goes into an account that's in the employee's name, and when the employee leaves, retires, that's the amount of money that they have. And it's their responsibility from that point forward. The government entity makes no guarantees that you're gonna get this much per year or anything like that during your retirement. When that money runs out, the local government, or the government entity has no additional responsibility. So that's really one of the big differences between the two plans. And a defined benefit plan, all the risk lies with the local government. If the market goes south like it did a few years ago, fortunately has come back now, but, uh, then if there's shortfalls in the pension plan, the government has to increase their contributions to those pension plans in order to cover the promises that they've made to the pensioners. Under the defined contribution plan, the government has no such responsibility. So, you know, once the money's paid in there under defined contribution plan, that's the end of it for the, for the government. Other post-employment benefits, also known as OPEB, you'll hear "OPEBs" sometimes. Uh, these are things, the most prevalent one probably are health insurance benefits that are provided to retirees. Again, similar to a pension plan, it's a promise made to the retirees that we'll cover your, we'll pay so much toward your health insurance, and we'll provide your health insurance, all that type of thing. This one, they claim, is a really big problem that's hanging out there, that nobody really knows what the number is, and what the potential liability is for the government. City of Palm Coast does not actually provide, uh, health insurance for its retirees. Under state statute, we have to make it available to them, but they have to pay for it. Uh, right now, we only have one person that I'm aware of that actually has taken advantage of that option. Uh, however, we do have to, in our financial statements, report a potential liability. Uh, we do not fund it, because it's, I think it's only around $100,000, so it's not really a big number for us. Uh, you know, when we're talking about, we've got $300 million in assets and stuff. So, uh, that one is there, but it's not really a big issue for the city of Palm Coast. And with that, as I said, uh, on June 7th, we'll talk about revenues, and we'll really get into the revenues, uh, which is more the, uh, presentation that I do at Citizens Academy. And then, uh, on June 21st, we'll get into the individual funds, and then after that, we'll do it based on whatever y'all, questions y'all may have.
Are there any council questions for Mr. Britton? Mrs. DeStefano.
Does the employ, I'm sorry, does the employee pay into the defined contributions for pension?
No. Uh, the money that goes into the defined contribution plan, uh, we've got actually two plans that the city has. We have a 401A plan, which is similar to a 401K in the private sector. The employee cannot pay into that plan, that is the one that the city pays into. The city also provides for employees a deferred compensation plan, also known as a 457 plan. That one, the employees can pay into, but it is optional. Uh, a lot of employees do put some money in there, you know, there's limits as to how much they can put in and that type of thing, but, uh, so, a lot of employees do take advantage of that, but it doesn't, um, they don't have to pay in in order to get any kind of a match or anything on their 401A.
All right. To summarize, if I heard you correctly, retirees from Palm Coast would take the money that is in for the pension, and they assume the responsibility of investing a retirement fund for themselves. The city was not gonna be obligated to be making these payments.
Correct.
And the health insurance will not be given to retirees, but they have access to it.
That's correct.
But they would pick up the tab.
That's correct.
Okay. Those are two major issues that's being fought in state government. So, thank you very much.
Mr. Maker.
Ray, could you give us a brief discussion on the impact of capital outlay to our expenditures? I was looking at the 2011 budget, it's about, what, 50%?
Uh, yeah, it was about 50%, if I remember right, maybe a little more than 50% was capital.
Would you explain what types of projects we're including in that?
Well, within the, uh, the 2011 budget, uh, the big, the biggest chunk of the capital was $50 million for, uh, the completion of the Old Kings Road project, which would be, would be funded by a bond issue and paid for by a special assessment against the property owners. That was probably, we had about, if I remember right, roughly about $90 million in, uh, capital projects, and 50 million of that was just that one project. Most of the rest of the capital in there was probably related to utility. You know, they have a lot of larger capital projects, and there were a few road projects we had in there. We were finishing up Bel Air, um, and we've got, had planning in there for, uh, North Old Kings Road, and Palm Harbor Extension, and some stuff like that in there.
Thank you. Mr. Lewis.
Ray, I just have two, two short questions. Uh, you were talking about term, or terminology, and you said "assigned" and "unassigned." Uh, does, do they sometimes use "dedicated" and "undedicated"?
That, that used to be the term, oh, well, it's designated, was, used to be the term, yeah. The terms used to be restricted, designated, and undesigned. Uh, this was one of the rule changes. Actually, governments don't have to start using it till this year. We early implemented it, and we actually included it in our 2010 audit. But, uh, governments don't have to actually do it until they do their 2011 audit, so we were a little bit ahead of the game on that.
Okay, right. And just to go to your defined contribution plan, uh, you said that at the end, when a person retires, we give them the money, so to speak.
Right.
But do we really give them the money, or we, we just take them to another process, where we help them to determine what type of, uh, retirement they want in terms of, um, uh, for instance, if they're married, there's, there's, um, there's programs that will provide for themselves and their spouse, or there's a lifetime program, that sort of thing. Do we assist in that?
Well, uh, actually, the, as soon as the money goes into the employee's account, they are responsible for it. Uh, we are, we have two service providers that actually take care of the record-keeping and everything on that for us. Um, and the money goes in there, it's in an employee's account, it's in their name, is basically their money at that point in time, or after they've been here five years, 100% of it's theirs.
It's vested.
Yeah. Uh, it's basically 20% a year, up to five years. Uh, so if they left at three years, 40% of that would go back into the plan. But, uh, there's a list of funds, the employee can choose to invest his money, their money in any of those funds, uh, within those programs. Uh, there's, uh, different things in there, different options in there for employees. If, if an employee isn't, you know, very astute at investing, uh, you know, they may go into, uh, a fund that the plan has set up that kind of combines fixed assets and equity assets and those types of things into just one fund, you know, the employee can pick those. They can actually, I think it's like 20 bucks a month, and they can actually have, uh, the, our administrator manage their money for them. So, and we also have people come in from our two administrators, uh, and they can, employees can go in and sit down with them, and talk to them, and, you know, and then make their own decisions and stuff like that. So we try to provide the education and the opportunity for the employees to get as much information as they can. And when they, you know, when they do retire, there's options out there, you know, they can use part of their money to actually purchase an annuity through the program or whatever. Uh, so, it's a lot of different options out there for the employees, but it's really kind of up to them how they manage their, their money.
Thank you.
Ray, what is the city and employee contribution factor into that fund?
Uh, the, like I say, the city is the only one that pays into the 401A plan. Uh, that's actually the city's pension plan. Uh, and it was kind of set up to mirror the, the state retirement system, so we actually have different categories. General employees, the city puts in 10% of their salary, goes into the 401A. Senior management, which is basically the department heads, uh, get a 13% contribution from the city. And then special risk, which in our case would be the firefighters, or if we had law enforcement, they would be included in the special risk, uh, they get a contribution of 17 and a half percent. Those, at the time they were set up, were roughly, uh, the same as what we were paying into the, the few people that we have that are on the Florida retirement system. Uh, the people that came over from the county that were in the Florida retirement system were allowed to stay in the Florida retirement system. I think we have about two dozen people left in that. So those rates were pretty close to what the, the Florida retirement system was charging or getting at that point in time. Um, and, and they do have different categories. They also have category for elected officials, but our elected officials don't get anything, so...
Yeah, we noticed that.
Yeah, we noticed it. But also, uh, do they, uh, you said after five years, they get 100% of that fund?
Right. We have phased investing, so each year that they're here, they get credit for 20%. So like, if somebody left after two years, uh, they would get to keep 40% of the money that was in their plan, that's in their name, but the other 60% would roll back into the plan, and it actually gets redistributed to everybody else that's, that are in the plan.
Thank you. The public might be interested in a historical perspective. Uh, with all the debate that was going on in Wisconsin, and Jersey, and Indiana, about defined contribution versus defined benefit, when we became a city, we chose to go with the defined contribution. Why would, for example, Flagler County have gone with the FRS, the Florida retirement system?
Well, in Flagler, in Flagler County's case, they're required to. All counties are in the Florida retirement system. Uh, cities have the option of going into the Florida retirement system, or are going on their own. Uh, you will find that a lot of small cities are probably in the Florida retirement system, just because they don't have the, uh, ability to manage a pension plan on their own. Uh, and, but a lot of larger cities are also in the Florida retirement system. I guess there's really just kind of this perception that, yeah, you got a large plan, uh, there's, you know, less risk with it. On the other hand, you know, we've seen the rates go up in the Florida retirement system over the years. I remember back when I worked at the city of Lakeland, back in the late 80s, early 90s, cities were screaming to get out of the Florida retirement system, because the rates they were having to pay were just going up and up and up all the time. Uh, and, and actually, the state, in, I think it was '96, actually gave them the option, '94, '96, somewhere in there, actually gave them like a one-time option, "Okay, if you want out, get out," you know? And a lot of, a lot of them got out at that point. Uh, now the state's saying, "Well, if you wanna come on in, come on back in," and that kinda stuff, so, um, you know, but yes, the city of Palm Coast opted to just go with the defined contribution plan. We've got then more control over, over the rates, and, you know, as opposed to Florida retirement system, where they say, "This is how much you will pay, uh, on your employees."
If, Mayor, if I may add, from a management standpoint, the defined contribution, you know what your cost is every year. Defined benefit, it's, it is so tied to the stock market, because that's where those dollars are invested, and when the market goes down, you've gotta contribute more. When the market's good, you can contribute less. That's usually when, particularly if you have unions, they, the employees argue, "Oh, sweeten the benefit a little bit, so you stay flat." But then when the market goes down, you have to actually make up even more. So that's how a lot of the entities get into trouble, is that, that future crystal ball isn't always really reliable as to what your costs are, and those costs fluctuate up and down, whereas we know what ours are, it's a fixed percentage of your payroll every two weeks, and, and it's very predictable each year at budget time. Huge difference for us.
One more, not really related to this at all, but can you give me a quick update on the SBA A and B funds?
Uh, yeah, the...
How we doing?
Uh, we're, we're doing fine, really. Uh, the B fund is making a distribution over to the A fund every month. Uh, they, those funds that are in there are basically, um, collateralized mortgage obligations, so the mortgages are being paid as soon as, you know, when they get money in, it gets transferred over to the A fund, so we've got access to it. Uh, the last one, which may have been a couple of weeks ago that I saw that they did a distribution, we've now recouped about 83%, I think, of the money that was in the B fund. Uh, so, uh, you know, we're, we're fine, and, and as I'd said originally, that was, there was really no principle in there, that was really, we'd earned more than actually went into the B fund, and, uh, and right now, probably the market value of the securities are in there are worth about 70% of what's left in there, so even if they sold everything right now, we wouldn't, you know, really lose much of anything.
Mr. Lewis.
Ray, I just, one more question, um, because the manager just triggered that thought in me. He was, he was talking about the market going up and down, and how much we have to put in when it goes down, and how much we don't have to put in. Uh, and I think, for the benefit of the public, um, he would, if you were describing that, you would talk about, uh, unfunded liability, and funded liability, and that sort of thing. And could you just briefly run through that?
Well, yeah. Uh... Well, yeah. In a defined benefit pension plan, the actuary will go through, they run all kinds of numbers. I don't understand how they do a lot of it, but it's based on, you know, ages and, you know, growth and all this kind of stuff. And at the end of all of that, they end up with a number that says, this is potentially what you're going to have to pay out over the life of everybody in this plan. And this is how much you've got in assets, and this is, you know, they're going to grow this much or earn this much over all those years. And at the end of it, you either have, and usually you have some unfunded liability number, you know, whatever that may be. And there, you don't have to make all of that up in one year because, you know, they're working with estimates, so it's never going to be exactly right, and they basically amortize that out over usually 30 years. And you've got to make sure you pay that much extra in over that 30-year period. Well, they do an actuarial study every year, so that number changes every year. But that would be your unfunded liability, so that's that potential amount out there that you could have to put in at some point in the future, but it doesn't necessarily mean you actually will do it. So, you know, that's just kind of what an unfunded liability is.
Thank you. Any other council questions? Thank you very much, Mr. Britt. Okay, agenda item number five, second reading of an ordinance relating to fire and rescue system impact fees. Mr. Reichman.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, relating to amending Chapter 29 Impact Fees, Article 4, Fire and Rescue System Impact Fees. It's a code ordinance of the City of Palm Coast. Amending Section 29108, payment to provide for an early payment incentive, providing for applicability, codification, conflict, severability, and for an effective date.
Mr. Landon, this is second reading.
Yep. Mayor, City Council, second reading of this ordinance, the next two are related to it. You've seen the presentation, what, about 2,500 times? No. We've gone through this at a couple of workshops, we've had a public hearing last time, we got very positive feedback from the Home Builders Association, really no other comments. This does two things. One of them, it simplifies our categories for transportation impact fees. As we went through, we had some really strange categories, a lot of interpretation that's confusing to the end user, to staff, and this tries to simplify that. That's part of our goal under Prosperity 2021, of being more customer-friendly and also be more fair. The other thing it does is to help our older commercial areas, any building that was completed was standing prior to incorporation, we will not charge additional transportation impact fees as a result of a change in use that's more intense. Basically with the idea that that building's been paying taxes, been there for some time, and we really want to encourage those buildings to be upgraded, occupied, and this is a means of doing that. Once again, part of your Prosperity 2021 goals.
That's transportation impact fees. We're on fire and rescue. Can you just quickly, what are the changes?
The last one is, I'm sorry, I guess I'm doing all three of them.
You're doing all three at once?
Yeah. The last one is the ability to pay at the time of CO, certificate of occupancy versus at the building permit time. The concept behind that is that the impact doesn't happen until the building's occupied. If you do pay at building permit time, you get a 3% discount, which is basically waiving the administrative fees that were part of the overall fees. And yes, Mayor, that was trying to summarize all three of them for you. And Nestor's prepared to answer questions, go through the whole presentation if you want to see it again, but we believe it's ready for final reading, final approval.
Council questions for either the manager or Nestor?
Yes, sir.
Seeing none, let's open the meeting to the public, and from the public, which should be heard on Agenda Item Number Five. Seeing no one approach the podium, we'll close the public portion meeting, go back to council. Additional questions, comments, or a motion?
Just a comment, that I'm really impressed at the hard work that went into not only this ordinance, but the next two. And Prosperity 2021 is a fine document, and I'm glad to see us implementing the elements of it. So with that being said, I'll motion to approve the agenda item.
Second. Moved in second. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Meeker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeStefano?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Mormon?
Yes.
Mayor Nett?
Yes.
Mayor, this motion is passed five to zero.
Thank you very much. Somewhat related, Agenda Item Number Six, relating to park system impact fees. Mr. Reichman.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, relating to amending Chapter 29 Impact Fees, Article 3, Park System Impact Fees. Amending Sections 2980 and Section 2981, to make a correction and to provide for an early payment incentive, providing for applicability, severability, codification, conflicts, and for an effective date.
Thank you. Mr. Landon?
No additional comments.
Same as the previous?
Same as the previous, yes.
Any council questions? Open the meeting to the public, and from the public, which should be heard on Agenda Item Number Six. Seeing no one approach the podium, we'll close the public portion meeting, go back to council. Additional questions, comments, or a motion on Agenda Item Number Six? Move to approve?
Second.
Moved in second. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Meeker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeStefano?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Mormon?
Yes.
Mayor Nett?
Yes.
Mayor, this motion is passed five to zero.
Thank you very much. Agenda Item Number Seven, ordinance relating to transportation system impact fees. Mr. Reichman.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, amending Chapter 29, Article 2, Sections 29 hyphen 31 through 2938, relating to transportation impact fees. Accepting the Transportation Impact Fees Consolidation Report, amending definitions, applicability, amending fee amounts, and the procedures for the imposition, calculation, collection, expenditure, reimbursement, and credit of transportation impact fees, to provide for an early payment incentive, amending the annual adjustments and updates of transportation impact fees, amending Table 3.1 to reclassify uses into groups, and to provide for an average fee, providing for applicability of ordinance for codification, conflict, severability, and for an effective date.
Thank you. Mr. Landon?
No additional comments.
No additional comments. Council questions?
Seeing none, open the meeting to the public, and from the public, which should be heard on Agenda Item Number Seven. Please give us your name and limit your contribution to three minutes.
Good morning. Jason DiLorenzo, Flagler Home Builders Association. Councilman Meeker stole my thunder. I was going to say just the same thing, that it's great to see the Prosperity 2021 program really coming together and see parts of it, you really roll out very quickly, I'm quite impressed. And I think this is really is a big part of it, you touched on it, that reviewing how impact fees would be collected as part of that. And the only other thing you didn't cover, I would say today, is that government efficiency, this has a real part of government efficiency in it. It was my understanding that your staff was having a real difficulty researching the older buildings and how those owners changed uses over the years, and this really will help with that as well, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker. Next speaker. Seeing no one approach the podium, we'll close the public portion meeting, go back to council. Additional questions, comments, or a motion, Mr. Meeker?
Just a quick comment on that. I mean, back when they were doing that kind of stuff, Jason, we were still using DOS operating system, so it's not surprising. Thanks for getting lost. With that being said, I'll motion to approve the agenda item.
I wonder how many younger people know what a DOS operating system is? We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Meeker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeStefano?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Mormon?
Yes.
Mayor Nett?
Yes.
Mayor, this motion is passed five to zero.
Thank you very much. Agenda Item Number Eight, an ordinance relating to Cobblestone Village Phase Two, First Amended and Restated Master Plan Development Agreement. Mr. Reichman?
This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, amending and restating ordinance number 200921, recorded or our book, 1749, beginning of page is 1143 of the public records of Flagler County, Florida. It's approving the master planned development agreement between Cobblestone Village at Palm Coast LLC and the City of Palm Coast for the Cobblestone Village Phase Two Master Planned Agreement. It's 7.62, more or less acres, as described in this ordinance, providing for legislative findings and intent for the taking of administrative actions, through repealing all conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, non-codification, and an effective date. And, Mr. Mayor, this is quasi-judicial, so if there were any ex parte communications, those need to be disclosed.
Thank you very much. This is quasi-judicial, therefore, I must ask if anyone has any ex parte communications that need to be disclosed.
I've had none.
Hearing none. Mr. Landon?
Mayor, City Council, it wasn't that long ago that we saw the Cobblestone Village, this portion of it, be approved by City Council for three restaurants and a hotel. I think this application's indicative of our economy of today. You know, there are many sectors that are suffering, but there are some that are actually growing, and one of them is our medical area. So as we talk about economic development and trying to grow jobs, it's important to look at those opportunities that are out there, and the expansion of our medical facilities is part of that. So staff has been working very hard with the applicant, the property owner, and our local hospital to do exactly that, and this was a great opportunity, in my opinion. Larry's going to go into the details of, from the land use development code, but from an economic development standpoint, this is a real opportunity for us, so, Larry, if you'll take it from there.
Thank you. Good morning. Larry Torino, Senior Planner, Planning Division, Community Development Department. I have a presentation this morning as to Mr. Britt's comments that he would like his presentations to be as brief as the planning department. I offer two options, one, the short program or the long program, I'll leave that option up to you.
Short.
Thank you. Like, in the audience, we have Mr. Bob Elliott representing Cobblestone Village LLC, Mr. Mark Watts, the legal representation, and Mr. Dan D'Antonio, who represents Lassiter Transportation. And they'll be welcome to answer any questions that you may have later in program. Let me begin with a location map, I'm sure we're all familiar with it. The site is outlined in red, some of the more prominent facilities in the areas, the Walmart, Belks, Golden Corral, and the property fronting on Cypress Head Drive. The future land use map designation is mixed use. This was changed, as Mr. Landon alluded to, approximately a year and a half ago, when the applicant submitted for a master plan development. The zoning is, in fact, master plan development district. Again, changed approximately a year ago from commercial COM2 to MPD. I'd like to just cover very briefly the restated sections of the development agreement. Basically, they focus on three different areas. One is permitted uses, second, development standards, and third, facility commitments. Going back to permitted uses, what it does, what the development agreement does is allow for the entitlement of a medical office building on the property. And while discussing the development agreement, staff, in cooperation with the applicant, discussed the hotel-fast food combination, and it was determined that should the hotel be developed first, that a fast-food drive-through restaurant would not be permitted, and vice versa, if a fast-food drive-through restaurant were developed before the hotel, that a hotel will not be permitted, and this, in fact, was done primarily to address traffic and transportation-related issues. As to development standards, what we looked at, because of the change in development that the applicant was seeking, was to allow for impervious surface ratio, or ISR, to exceed the maximum permitted for any one development site or lot, but the end result being, when the entire development was completed, that the impervious surface ratio for the project in its entirety would be consistent with the land development code. We also looked at, I'm sorry, parking, the same thing, I'll cover this actually in Section Nine, but what has happened is that on the previous development agreement, infrastructure of the property was going to be completed at one time, that meaning that all of the parking areas and everything associated with that would be completed at one time. Because of the economy and so forth, what we have elected to do in cooperation with the applicant is to allow unsite improvements to be done on an incremental basis, meaning that one lot could be developed individually and all infrastructure associated with it would happen at that time, each lot, each building would be self-sustaining as a standalone development. So as to parking, what we are saying is that any one phase of development, for instance, let's take Lot 1, if it were to be developed as a restaurant, that the parking would be allowed to exceed 110% of what is allowed, or 1.1 over what the maximum parking would be permitted to be. But the end result, again, like the impervious surface ratio, upon completion of the entire development, all parking for all facilities would be consistent with the land development code and not exceed 110% of the total required parking spaces for all facilities. The other change was to Exhibit B, to the development agreement, which is the conceptual development plan. Essentially, what it shows is, in lieu of the hotel and a restaurant, it now depicts a medical office building and a retail/office building, and I will show you a slide as we progress through. And here is that slide. This is the current conceptual development plan, showing a hotel, three sit-down restaurants, or this building here being a combination of retail and/or smaller restaurant facilities. The revised plan shows a medical plaza in lieu of a sit-down restaurant, and where the proposed hotel was shown is a retail office building. And again, keep in mind, either-or can take place. A hotel can be placed here, but you would not have a fast-food restaurant here. If the fast-food restaurant were developed on this part of the property, you would have a retail and office building and not a hotel. The strategic plan vision that was used both for the original development agreement and approval of the application was to expand the local economy. We feel this change to development agreement is very consistent with that goal. Recommendation, Planning and Land Development Board, at the meeting of April 16th, unanimously approved, recommended approval to City Council with this application. Staff's recommendation to City Council is to approve the application as restated and as reillustrated.
Thank you. Before we go to council questions, it might be helpful if you would explain to the public, what is the nexus between a hotel and a fast food? Why is the either-or?
Okay. The reason, the primary reason for it is transportation and traffic-related impacts, particularly P and peak hour trips, and I certainly don't want to get too much into Mr. D'Antonio's expertise here, and I'd be maybe saying something that's not totally accurate, but I think I feel pretty comfortable saying that. Drive-through restaurants generate much more traffic than you would with a hotel, different hours of the day, and we feel the combination of both would be detrimental to the overall development, so having either one or the other would best satisfy the overall development plan.
Thank you. Council questions? Mr. Meeker?
Well, first off, Larry, and, Mr. Mayor, thank you for asking that, because that was the first question on the top of my list here on why, so we'll move that one. I did want to discuss something in Section Four, permitted uses, Larry, and I don't have a preference one way or the other here, quite honestly, on this little puppy, but my question was, is it a good idea to narrowly limit the uses here? I'm going to just read my comment and then come up, I said, sure, I don't need more internet cafes, but maybe we have missed something reasonable, like an inside play area, for example, or a mail pack and ship place, that if they wanted to come in because we have restricted the uses in this section, now all of a sudden, the deal has to come back to council because we've, again, narrowly construed what can go in there. Any comments about that?
Well, we didn't really, we didn't really address any of the permitted uses. What you see listed in that section were approved with the first development agreement. The only change to permitted uses, back in the first paragraph, is actually the addition of number one, which is a medical office building. Everything else listed remains as-is and as approved in the initial development agreement.
I understand that, but my question is more, if somebody wanted to come into the commercial area and bring in one of those, an inside play area, for example, you know, for children or whatever, it's not part of the entitlements within the development that are limited to the following. What happens in a situation like that if you've got a ready person willing to come in and occupy a bay right now? What happens?
Okay, that, you bring up a good point, but I might add, when we initially crafted the development agreement with the applicant, we were very concerned about the natures of uses on this property, mainly because of traffic-related and transportation-related issues along this corridor, primarily the intersection of Cypress Edge and Cypress Point. Yes, we want people to go into this shopping area, but by the same token, we're not looking to draw the type of facilities that are high-impact traffic generators. It's a very, very tenuous situation, and perhaps the applicant could speak more to that. So we were very cautious in drawing up what uses would be allowed. In other words, if we went with the land development code and stayed steadfast with the comparable COM2 zoning classification and the type of uses that are permitted in that classification, we felt that would have been detrimental, again, to some of the characteristics or character we were trying to accomplish in developing this property.
If I may add to that, just kind of piggyback on what Larry was saying, this property has quite a bit of history, and it was actually some controversy over developing this. And at that time, because of things like traffic that Larry's talking about and other uses, and trying really to make sure that the uses were not just compatible, but kind of desirable for that shopping center area, this list of uses was all part of those negotiations. And it was with residents and other people that came out. So this list was not, we're not trying to alter that list at this time, so that it doesn't look like we're now doing the bait and switch, and that we're staying with that agreement, except for the medical office.
So what happens if something reasonable? I mean, I, again, I'm not, I'm not in the business of putting in indoor play areas or anything else like that, but if they wanted to come in, what process do they go through?
They have to go through the process you're going through right now. There would be a lot of evaluation on traffic. Traffic was a driving force here. They, you know, the concurrency, you know, those terms. I know none of us, well, I don't know about none of us, don't like that term, but the fact of it is, is it was part of that driving force as to what could and could not go in here. And without having those limitations, this project didn't meet a lot of those standards. So it was actually, at the time, a good thing. Now, when you look back, time changes, but right now, we are trying to, to meet the timeframe to get the medical office building forward.
Yeah, and it's, again, it just seems silly to me to limit it, but, okay. And a mail pack and ship store, is that the same thing as a copy and print center, do you?
I could see them being very similar, yes.
Okay. See, I have another one here. Let me figure out how to get the stupid thing up on this. No, wrong. Here we go. All right. Oh, it was in a discussion on the phasing of the development where it talked about parking Under parking, it's Section 14, it prens B, which, I'm not sure what happened to prens A, but it talks, says phases of the development may exceed 110% of the minimum parking permitted to support an individual use. However, the final number of parking spaces for the overall development shall not exceed 110% of the total. And I'm wondering, what is the relationship between that statement and the one that happens a little further down, under the professional, under V, the professional offices, where we talk about impervious parking spaces shall not exceed 90% of the required number? What is the relationship between not exceeding 90% of the required number and the ability to go up to 110%?
Okay, 90%, you cannot exceed 90% of the total required parking spaces with impervious parking. The conceptual development plan, if I can go back to it.
I think what you're saying is that the remaining increase up to 110% would have to be semi-impervious.
They would have to be pervious parking, yes.
Okay, that's a good, quick answer on it. That's it for me, Mr. Mayor.
Other council questions? Mr. Lewis.
Just one quick, two quick ones. This goes back to where you described the lots, and the total acreage is 7.62, plus or minus, which consists of 1.38 plus or minus, and 6.11 plus or minus. And that's total up to 7.62 because we're including the pluses in there.
Well, yes, there was a slight, I guess, an updated survey, if you will, was conducted subsequent to the approval of the initial development agreement. That updated survey, I get reconfigured one of the lot lines on an already existing lot, added that to this property. So the increase in acreage went from 7.49 to 7.62.
Right, okay. Mr. Meeker stole my clocking, but I'll just ask another question.
I didn't mean to do it to two people today.
You're saying that each individual entity can only have 110% of whatever the minimum is?
No, each individual lot, as it's developed, may exceed the 110%. For instance, if the required parking, maximum parking were 100 spaces, 10% would allow you typically by code to construct 110 spaces. And this individual property, let's take, for instance, the medical building, their maximum, maximum parking, including the 1.1%, let's say, is 150 spaces. Their site plan may show 165 spaces.
Right.
However, as each, each lot is developed, there's three lots, the total number of parking spaces cannot exceed the 110% total.
So we have four, four possibilities for this property. Is that correct? Four?
Well, three, I think there'll be three development lots. So the total parking, what you need to look at, Councilman Lewis, is, for instance, the total parking based on the conceptual development plan is 365 spaces.
Okay.
They're allowed to exceed that by 37 spaces. So 365 plus 37, which is 380-something, they cannot, the overall development, when it's completed, cannot accommodate more than 382 or 83 parking spaces total.
All right, so in case of the medical building, if they needed more connectivity would come to play for them?
Yes.
Okay.
So again, the whole is equal to the sum of its parts. It may be over in some instances, but the end result will be the fixed number. That's part of the approved conceptual development plan for the entire property.
Right. Thank you.
Mr. Moore.
When you address shared parking, is that what you're addressing, the entire development?
Yes, I, there, in this instance, I believe there'll be probably cross-access, shared parking agreements between the individual lots, since the parking is such, is so proximate to each development site.
Now, when you talk about a driveway connecting Walmart with this development, is that your reasoning to give it a second exit and entrance off of Cypress Edge?
The intent, this is future planning, as planners sometimes do, you know, we're looking to the future. It would be nice to have, the applicant is agreeable to pursuing this. How Walmart would welcome it, we don't know. But our objective as planners, again, is connectivity between development sites, and if we can reduce any trips on Cypress Edge, going from one property to the next, this driveway connection would satisfy that. But whether or not it ever comes to fruition, we can't say. It's something that we want to show on the plan, hopefully could be pursued sometime in the future, but there is no exact date and no exact application for this to happen at this time.
Well, now, by putting that in this ordinance, are we making the assumption that Walmart is agreeable to that?
We have, they have not been approached yet.
Are we stepping out on unexplored territory here by putting it in?
I don't think so, because it shows only on the applicant's property. That's only showing on the Cobblestone property. We're not showing the connection, even though the intent is there, we're not showing a connection on, per se, on Walmart property.
And Larry, it's not a requirement. It is.
No, sir.
It would be allowed, but it is not required for this development. So it doesn't bind them if Walmart says no, but if Walmart says yes, then it allows it and it's part of the site plan.
That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Any other council questions? If not, we'll open the meeting to the public, any from the public wish to be heard on this agenda item, agenda item number eight. Seeing none approach the podium, we'll close the public portion of the meeting, go back to council. Additional questions, comments, or motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that this ordinance be approved.
Second.
Moved in second. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Meeker.
Yes.
Councilmember DeStefano.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Councilmember Mormon.
Yes.
Mayor Nets.
Yes.
Mayor, this motion is passed 5 to 0.
Thank you very much. Agenda item number nine, a resolution recognizing, confirming legislation in progress regarding the regulation of internet cafes. Mr. Landon.
Mayor, I'm going to try to give you a little background. This one's hit us fairly quickly as a result of discussion at the workshop last week. This item was placed on the agenda at the request of City Council at that time. History, oh, a year ago, maybe, some time ago, the internet cafe business came to Palm Coast. I would say it's, now I think about it, been over a year, it's been a couple, two or three years. But sometime back, City Council asked, well, isn't this just gambling? People, when they describe it, it sure sounds like gambling, and is that allowed, and is that legal? And some of those questions have come up. At that time, we talked about, well, is the state regulating these establishments, or are we regulating them? What's the, what's the future hold for these? And at that time, City Council decided not to take any action. Since then, they have become quite prevalent throughout many of our shopping centers. We currently have eight of them open. We have four in the pipeline, some type of application at this time, so a potential of 12 of them. City Council last week said, we need to take a look at, is this something that we do need to regulate? Is this something we need to limit? And of course, with that just being questions, and you're talking about land uses and a lot of legal issues, we don't have answers for you at this time. So City Council asked our attorney draft a moratorium ordinance, which is a temporary stop for new ones, is what you asked for, until we had a chance to look at it. And state law allows for that to occur for six months, in which time you have to make a decision as to what you're going to do with this particular land use. Our land use code, which we have to follow, said you had to have a seven-day notice, which meant that we could not have the public hearing for that moratorium ordinance on your agenda today. But there's also the provision of legislation in progress that, in Florida, says that if you have legislation in progress, you can prevent people from basically trying to put a run on City Hall to get under the wire. So at the direction of City Council, I implemented that administratively last week and said, okay, told my planning and development staff, we will not accept any more applications until City Council has an opportunity to take action. Then our attorney said, that is best to have a formal resolution. It doesn't actually enact the moratorium ordinance, but it basically says that we are invoking the legislative process provision, so no new applications until you have a chance to have a public hearing and formal action. So that's what's in front of you today. There are two options for you to consider, well, actually, three, obviously. One of them is not to adopt any resolution, in which case we will continue to operate as we have been, which is accepting these applications for these establishments as they come in. Secondly, is a resolution that puts a total moratorium until you have a chance to consider this in June, for all of the approvals of any type for these type of establishments. What that means is if you adopt that first ordinance or resolution, excuse me, then those four applications that are currently in the process, and they're in the process at different levels, that we would not approve the business tax receipt, even though we've already issued the certificate of occupancy, those type of different stages that go through, have to happen oftentimes when they are doing construction before they open. The second option, the one that we have in front of you, you see that the difference is basically saying, anybody who applied, whatever that application was, whether it was a building permit, occupancy permit, a business tax receipt, prior to last Tuesday, which was May 10th, that we would allow them to open. And with the idea that they actually submitted the application prior to discussion about a moratorium until you have a chance to address this issue permanently. So those are the two resolutions. The latest one I just described, you should have in front of you, and it has the red lines, it adds those provisions, that anybody who has applied would have the ability to continue through our process, but we would not accept any new applications. Okay, so those are your three options, and I'm going to turn, this is very legal process. It's something that Mr. Eichmann has taken the lead on, and staff is just trying to be helpful. I'm trying to give you the history and what your options are, so any issues and details as to where we go from here really need to come from your attorney.
Let me just add a couple. City managers did a great job of kind of bringing you up to today, but it's one thing I did want to add, which, last Tuesday, a week ago, just not too long ago, what really started all this was, I guess, I'm to blame. I gave just a brief report on some activity that's occurred in the court system down in the Orlando area. Indeed, Seminole County had passed an ordinance which was going to prohibit the use and operation of these types of machines that are most commonly used by what is often called the internet cafes. And that had, that ordinance had been challenged in the courts, in federal courts down in the Orlando area. And there was a court order, which I had mentioned to you last Tuesday in our workshop, which precipitated discussion, which is leading to what we're talking about today. Now, what your city manager indicated is absolutely correct. Moratoriums are, the Florida courts have held, are land use ordinances. We're telling property owners how they can use their land. We're doing it in a negative fashion, but we're saying, you can't do this on your property, which you would otherwise normally be able to, for a defined but limited period of time. That's what a moratorium is. So under Florida law, it has to be adopted as a land use ordinance, under the procedures, under Chapter 164 in our land development code. And as your city manager, Mr. Landon, indicated, there are certain requirements under Florida law, and as adopted in our land development code, as far as the proper due process for the adoption of that. So that presents a kind of a catch-22. Certainly, what we're trying to do, as your staff and as your city attorney's office, is to address your objective, your policy objective, which is is to address your objective, your policy objective, which is to try to create a kind of a status quo, kind of a hold, so that the city can follow up on what's happening in Seminole County, so we can take a look at what's happening in the general northeast Florida area, look at what other jurisdictions are doing regarding the regulation of these types of establishments. In order to do that, we'd like to try to be able to stop as of last Tuesday. Well, we can't get, we just can't snap our fingers and make an instant adoption of a land use ordinance. It's just not allowed by law. But we are allowed, under Florida law, to consider this doctrine called legislation in progress, and it allows just that objective, to maintain a status quo. Can't do it forever, but we can do it temporarily. And that's what's before you today, is a resolution recognizing the Florida approved, it's by the Florida courts, it's a case involving the city of Clearwater several years ago, allowing this legislation in progress. Now, you can't just pull it, something randomly as far as the date, but what the courts have said is that when there's a public announcement, a public direction, a policy direction that's been initiated by the governing body and by the staff pursuant to that policy direction, that's the date. And the date that this city indicated to initiate that legislation, meaning the moratorium, was last Tuesday. And that's what this resolution recognizes. Now, what the options are before you, as far as how broad do you want this to be, the most recent version of this resolution, which is recognizing the legislation in progress, would essentially allow those folks that had started or were into the process for approval of their development orders for these types of uses prior to last Tuesday, they would be allowed to go forward. That's what the most recent version of this resolution, which the underlines, and that allows that. And that would be the most conservative approach to an adoption of this type of stay, if you will, this imposition of a status quo. And that's what is being recommended by your city attorney's office and by your staff for your consideration and your approval today.
Counsel questions. Mrs. DeStefano.
After all the legalese.
It's as simple as I can put it.
I have to bring it down to Mary's simple, if I understand this correctly, what I have in front of me are eight.
Existing.
Existing. And the four that are in the process of construction, application, will be allowed to go forward and open their business, which would then give us 12 Internet cafes. Am I correct in that?
That is one option.
Okay, that's one option. What's my second option?
Second option is the original resolution that doesn't have that, which you have in front of you. See the red line in front of you?
Strike paragraph six.
Yeah, it would not, those that have already applied, we would now not allow them to open.
Not allow them to open.
Right.
Well, during the term of the moratorium.
During the term of the moratorium.
And that's what this ordinance is about.
That resolution will allow those that have applied to open.
To open.
Right, those are your two options.
Which would bring us up to 12.
Yes. Now, if your other option is not to approve anything, which means we stay.
Status quo.
Status quo.
We go from 12 to 28.
Or whatever. We don't know.
So if we approve, if we approve this today, then the applications that are working on the construction and opening will be allowed to proceed, but then there will be no more.
That is the latest resolution.
That's what we're looking at right now.
That's the latest resolution, yes.
Counsel questions.
The one that has closed, can that tax receipt or city license be transferred to a new owner if it's sold?
Not based on this resolution.
Non-transferable.
If they close or they want to relocate, the answer is no, we won't accept that application if you adopt this. And I still wanted to stress that your next meeting, you will have to pass the, it takes two readings, the actual moratorium ordinance that then puts this totally into effect. This is a temporary stopgap, then the moratorium is still temporary, but it's a six month temporary issue, and then at that time, you instruct staff to work with legal counsel to go through the land use process to evaluate our options when it comes to these establishments.
So we have to do that within 180 days?
Yes, after you adopt the ordinance.
Right.
You can't leave this just hanging out there forever and ever. You're going to have to, if you.
It's off one day.
Time cert.
After 180 days, it goes away and everybody's back to doing business again.
Right, right. And that's, I think.
Well, the folks that are there now can continue to operate. What would happen if we don't extend the moratorium, or if we don't take any action, is that you go back to the point where this would be a permitted use, people can continue or will be able to restart submitting applications for additional above the eight or the 12 existing establishments.
Mr. Lewis.
Further clarification or additional clarification? We have before us the, first, the document that was given to us, now we have the second one that was given to us today. And one allows people in the pipeline to go forward, and the other one does not.
Correct.
Yes.
The first one did not, the second one allows, adds provisions to allow that.
So with respect to the first one, if it does not, that only allows us the time to look into this further, but doesn't, doesn't give us the option of closing anybody.
This, neither one of these options would close anybody that's already operating.
Right.
And has a business tax receipt and operating legally. One of the reasons why it was important to kind of highlight that there are four in the pipeline is because I didn't want, a month from now, you seeing a new one open, and you say, whoa, 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 we thought we put a moratorium on that. Well, if you adopt the second one, you will see those four open eventually in the future, but we won't accept any other application.
But the first one, it wouldn't open.
The first one, they would not open unless legal action was taken, and they were successfully in challenge us legally.
And so let me just put a little, a little more information, so you can understand why there were these two versions. Last Tuesday, a week ago, you asked for my office to work with staff to make, create, bring back legislation which would maintain the status quo for the citizens in the city. And so we looked at preparing a moratorium, and that was prepared Wednesday morning. The reason, again, you don't have that in front of you this morning is because of the notice requirements that Mr. Landon and I both explained. So again, Wednesday, we immediately, once that was recognized, that we would not be able to meet those notice requirements, we decided to move forward to try to address your policy direction with this resolution. And when I prepared this resolution, I was unaware that there were these applications in, if you will, in the pipeline. So when I became aware of that, Mr. Landon and I had a discussion about providing the option for this council to allow, to go forward, those businesses, those property owners that have these, these applications, these potential businesses in the pipeline. And as Mr. Landon indicated, some of them are much further along. I believe some have gone as far as already having a CO.
Right.
But just have not yet received their business tax receipts. So those folks, and this was the discussion that I had with your city manager, those folks have already done the build out on their tenancies or their property, and have purchased all their equipment and so on. So there's a substantial investment that they've made, thus the recognition of that. And we wanted to submit to you this opportunity to recognize that by the most recent draft of this resolution. So that's, a lot's been going on in the last seven days to try to, to address your direction to staff and to, to my office.
And if I could, one other clarification, because someone pointed out, we've said there are eight existing, and that's because I'm counting dots on the map. One of them is actually closed, so we only have seven existing. We had eight, but with one I'm closing, we're down to seven. Just a little clarification.
Other council questions? Mr. Meecker.
I was looking at your map on where the current seven are located, and where the four new applications are in. Isn't this looking a little bit like a dense pack? If I was proposing to put this many fast food places in here, from a planning standpoint, would we think this is a really great idea?
You know, you're getting into that judgment call that we really are not prepared and don't want to start getting into the merits of this issue right now, because that will be a very thorough evaluation.
We would look at transportation on fast food restaurants going into this area and saying, whoa, wait a minute, you got two there now, you can't handle three more.
From just at a glance, you start concentrating these in one area, and there are issues that go along with that.
Well, if I could deal with that, one of the things that, the findings that you are making for this moratorium, the findings that would be necessary, the underlying rationale, justification for a moratorium, is the history that other jurisdictions have had, that have already had a lot of these establishments. And some of the concerns they have are the impact on citizens. The argument is, or I don't know if that's the right word, but the concern is, is that while it is not under state law technically gambling, it has a lot of the same consequences to the people that frequent these establishments. So that's one of the, one of the concerns that has led other jurisdictions to impose moratoriums and to enact restrictions on these, given that the state has not stepped forward to prohibit them or limit them. The other types of concerns that other jurisdictions have, are facing and have had to address are adverse secondary impacts, meaning primarily issues regarding crime, impacts on other property values. Now, Councilman Meecker, you expressed some other land use concerns. Those, when, forget about the crime, forget about the impacts on property values, or the impacts on folks that may get, have the addiction issues.
Why would I even want to do that?
I'm not, but let me finish my sentence. The concerns that you've raised regarding transportation, regarding parking, those may or may not be addressed already in our Land Development Code. These types of uses predominantly establish themselves in strip centers or in those types of establishments. So let's just say for the sake of this discussion, we don't do anything here today. Those folks are going to have to come in, and they're going to have to meet our Land Development Code requirements right now, as far as parking requirements, transportation requirements, those sorts of things. And I'm not prepared to address those specific issues. But for purposes of the predominant types of regulations that are being imposed on these establishments, I'm telling you from my experience, it's not so much that these establishments are causing problems with parking, they're not causing problems necessarily with transportation, they're causing the other problems that I've tried to explain this morning.
And for that reason, I mean, I went through and highlighted the sections of the whereas clauses that talks about how these things can greatly negatively impact public health, safety, and welfare, and that places other, and other locations in Florida that are subject to various crimes and other harmful secondary impacts on surrounding properties, that Internet cafes are, provide opportunities for criminal activities on and around the properties, not limited to robberies and burglaries, that the proliferation of Internet cafes in Florida, criminal activities associated with these establishments and other negative impacts proliferate in these areas. And then, of course, the secondary impacts. And what we're doing is we're locating a cluster of them, flanked on either side of Palm Coast Parkway East, Cypress Point Parkway, and Palm Coast Parkway West. And so with all those negative impacts, the one thing that we have to balance out of this is we have a guy that's got a vested interest in putting a business in, who spent some money upfront to, you know, purchase some equipment on an activity that we says fosters criminal activity and other negative secondary impacts. I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time going along with that one. And my belief is, we ought to be looking at scrapping for in six.
Other council questions?
I just want to agree with Frank's analysis, what he's saying there. I have similar thoughts along those lines.
I have a question for the attorney. Were we to go with the revised revision of the resolution with Frank's paragraph six? Were we to adopt that? We talk about projects that already are in the pipeline. Is it not conceivable that we could have received a building permit to modify the interior of a structure without any specificity as to its use? Would that building permit constitute approval for a new Internet cafe? When we, when we get a building permit to change walls and add plumbing or subtract plumbing, or so on and so forth, do we necessarily require that they tell us exactly what they're going to do with the property?
Let me answer in general what's been happening and give Bill a little chance to think about the legal answer to that. When these establishments first came into town, they didn't announce to us what they were. They could do an interior build out.
They were arcades when they first came.
Yeah, they were arcades, they were retail, because all they are is basically electrical, they have to have Internet connections, et cetera, then they line up tables and they put computers on the tables with chairs. So you, and we don't ask, you know, how many tables you're going to have, we have an occupancy load, how many people, that type of thing, but yeah, they can get a building permit to finish out or remodel existing space without ever telling us what it's going to be.
And my question is, would a permit of that nature be. Adequate for them to make the case that under paragraph six, they're entitled to.
Okay, I stalled long as I could stall.
And I don't know that I, you know, it's that you've got the legal answer, and then you have the on the ground, at the desk, practical answer. A lot of us can depend upon the honesty and the integrity of the folks that are coming forward to your, to your staff and filling out the paperwork. A lot of it is, can you catch it upfront, or do you catch it after the fact with code enforcement, Mr. Mayor? I will tell you that, that there are exemptions that are set forth in this, this resolution. Remember, it generally says that from May 10th forward, we're not going to issue any further permits or development orders or anything else for Internet cafes as that term is defined, but there are exemptions. They, the existing ones can repair, they can do general maintenance, they can do interior remodeling, you know, the things that you would normally expect, which would be common sense. They can do exterior repainting. We want, we don't want them to fall into disrepair while we have any type of moratorium. The ones that we're, that are, that we're trying, which were added in this most recent draft, go to, what do we do with those folks that are not open, but to some degree, before last Tuesday, based upon, in good faith, based upon the laws of Palm Coast at that time, they did everything that they were supposed to do to move forward towards being open, opening up a legal business in the city of Palm Coast. And they would otherwise be able to do that but for a CO or a business tax receipt or some other final type of approval. Now, you know, I have to say, while certainly this ordinance can be changed to eliminate the opportunity for those four establishments to move forward, I am not going to sit here today and tell you that they won't push back. Based upon, based upon, and that's going to be a business decision for them, along with the advice from their legal counsel, and a lot of that business decision will be based upon how much money they've already expended and invested. So that is a concern. It's a concern, that's a practical concern. Now, of course, this council is recognizing that weighed against that is the real world effects on our existing businesses and our way of life here in Palm Coast, if we have four more of these establishments open in the areas that are reflected on the map attached to this agenda item. to this agenda item.
I've still not got an answer to my question. We have four identified potential businesses by name that all clearly indicate what their intent is, to do an internet cafe. My question is, somewhere Nestor's department has ABC LLC, who has applied for a building permit to add some walls and add some electrical outlets and drop the ceiling in a currently vacant strip mall parcel. That application is in place, it's been received, it's been issued, they're in the process of dropping the ceiling, adding the wall, putting in the electrical outlets. Would the issuance of that building permit, under the second version of these resolutions, permit them to open an internet cafe because they have an application in process?
The short answer to that is yes.
Yes.
The second ordinance would allow it, the first ordinance would not allow it because
Which gives, in my mind, gives additional strength to Mr. Meeker's concern.
Yes.
Much as I hate to do retroactive legislation, telling somebody who in good faith has proceeded and spent his or her money or his investors' money, that leaves the door way too far wide open, in my mind.
Just those four, anybody new coming in and applies and then says, oh, by the way, I would like a business tax receipt for an internet cafe, we're going to tell them no, even though they got the building permit if they applied for that building permit after the 10th of May.
So the reason the second resolution incorporates these four is because they have clearly delineated what their intent is.
Yes. And, and the idea of legislative intent and stopping those applications from coming in is, is because as soon as they read the newspaper that the city council's thinking about adopting an ordinance, there's a run for the counter to, to get under, in under the wire. And we're saying, you can run for the counter, but go away and tell city council makes this public policy decision, we're not going to allow you to skate under the wire. These four, the difference is, is that these four applied before you even had the discussion.
Please silence all cell phones before entering the room.
So, the, that puts them in a different category. So you have three different categories. You have the businesses that are already open. I think that one's pretty clear, that where this moratorium is not going to impact those. You have those people who have not applied but are thinking about it. That's pretty clear, too. This moratorium is, you need to quit thinking about it until six months from now or whenever city council makes final decision. And then you have that middle category, that's in that gray area, as to, yeah, they've applied but they don't have final approval, and so I can, and they're at different stages. Some of them, maybe they got a building permit but they haven't actually completed the work. Others, I can tell you one, I know very well because it's right next to the city offices and city marketplace, he looks like he could open tomorrow. He's got all the computers lined up, he's got 70 of them in there, it's, it's ready to go. It's got the building permit, it's been, the CO, the certificate of occupancy has been issued, he's got some final details before that, that one opens and he gets the business tax receipt. So that gray area is why you're having discussion and those are the difficult ones. It's why you don't get any retirement benefits, because you don't have a difficult job.
And going back to what Mr., I'll tell you what, are we, are we in the question phase or are we in the discussion?
I still have a question, too.
Okay. Let's, let's try to restrict it to questions, let's hear from the public and then we can discuss if that's okay.
Don't forget it.
Don't forget it.
Right.
Question.
What food services do they provide at this cafe?
What do you care? They chater it. What do you care, Frank? Come on.
It's like, first of all, I've never been in one, okay? Let's, so, this is hearsay, this is not, but I have been told that they are very competitive. So yes, and if we can keep you there, you know, we definitely don't want you to get thirsty, we don't want you to get hungry, so there's usually some kind of food there that's free of charge for you to make sure you stay very comfortable and keep pulling that lever.
I have, in my mind, what a cafe is, but I think it's a little bit different here. And the internet service that the internet cafe provides, is that a free Wi-Fi service open to the public or is it a pay-for-fee service?
You're, I, I don't know, you know, I don't really don't know how they operate.
There's not, there's not one magic formula for their business model, but generally speaking, what they do is they sell these, these cards, they're, they're internet cards. You can use those.
For long distance calls.
For long distance calls. Some of them sell the type of service where you could use it on your, your home computer. But what the catch is, is that if you use their computers for this, with this card, you have access to types of poker and what we would think of as casino-like games. But you have to, but you can only have that type of product if you use the cards that you buy at their establishment. And of course, depending upon how that turns out, and they say it's pre-programmed, that there's no, you know, that there's no skill or chance involved, just a matter of statistics, depending upon how long you play and, and whether you push the buttons or pull the lever at the right time, you can get rewards. And, you know, call that what you want. The state of Florida has said that that falls within one of the exceptions under chapter 849, that makes it not gambling. Now, I'm sure that everyone in this room has an opinion on whether or not that makes sense or not, but, but the fact is, is that the state attorneys are not out there prosecuting these establishments as violating the gambling laws in the state of Florida. And the Supreme Court has ruled that this is, that enforcement is not, at this point in time, is based on local governments. So that we could direct a sheriff's office to do whatever we wanted to direct them to do, but state attorneys aren't going to prosecute, which is why we're having the discussion today.
And one last question. Is there any kind of special taxing authority that is created for these kind of entities? For example, gambling establishments for the Seminole tribes or other places contribute a tremendous amount of tax dollars into the school educational programs and all that. Maybe we want to consider allowing some of these in if they're offsetting impacts to the general fund, I don't know.
This is another legal question. I'm going to state here, you know, this is last minute, I mean, your staff, your attorney isn't, this just came up last Tuesday. Normally, we would have gone through quite an evaluation process and would have had a better opportunity to answer those questions. That's what the moratorium is for, to give us the opportunity to come back and answer those type of questions. Because right now, they're just an arcade, a video, and we treat them the same. So our taxing is the same as if though you had a, a pinball machine and that your business tax receipt is the only tax we have. We've talked about, is there a possibility of changing our local business tax receipt structure to tax them harder, but we're not prepared to answer that. And Bill may have, from my standpoint, but Bill may already have a legal answer for you, but I think those are the kind of questions that we need to bring back to you during the process.
There's more, there's more questions than, legal questions than answers. One is, if we would be stepping on state law toes for some sort of preemption, because no, we're only allowed to tax what the state legislature specifically allows us to tax. That's the fundamental rule of local, local government. So we can just start taxing something that we've not been given specific power under the state statutes to tax, as far as
Gee, that sounds just like Home Rule to me.
I understand, I understand. Don't get me started. But the other issue is, is that you can't just change your occupational or business tax receipts under chapter 205. There's limitations on how frequently you can do that and under what process you can do that. I have not, and the, the final, the final point is, I have not, in, in the types of regulations that I have been monitoring for these types of establishments, I have not seen any local government either impose or attempt to impose some sort of fee schedule or, if you will, revenue source from the, from the operation of these facilities. Mainly, I presume, having spoken to anyone that's tried, since I haven't seen anyone trying, because of the concern of what I just said, and that is, is that we can't tax unless we have specific legislative authority to tax. And then, of course, you have, you know, parimutial facilities are, they're heavily taxed, but who does the taxing? State of Florida.
Just one question. On that same line, do we tax them by establishment or by machine? I know we had this discussion once before.
By machine. You're by machine.
I'm going to say by machine unless Mr. Brett wanders in and tells me differently.
We, we discussed that, one of our previous meetings, and it's by machine.
Yes.
At this time, I'd like to open the meeting to the public, any from the public wish to be heard on this agenda item.
Charlie Erickson, Palm Coast. You know, after hearing the discussion last Tuesday at the workshop, just for the heck of it, I stopped by about four of the existing establishments just to see what type of person was inside. Interestingly enough, I found myself on many occasions being the youngest person in there, sitting down at one of the machines. And I, and I did talk to some of the individuals, they were there just for the enjoyment of sitting in front of a machine, watching objects roll past them and perhaps win something. But I can tell you that there's many Palm Coast residents over the age of 60 that are present customers of these locations. And while I can't condone long-term gambling, I know myself and at least one of the five of you sitting up there doesn't mind getting on a plane every once in a while and going someplace and spending some money. But I would just suggest we keep an open mind about what they are and I'd even suggest you visit one or two and get a good looksee for yourself. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Next speaker. Seeing no one approach the podium, we close the public board meeting, come back to council. Additional questions, comments, motion? Mrs. Stefano.
Mr. Erickson, I think I'm one of them.
I tried not to.
That's okay. I did some research over the last couple of weeks about this issue, and I guess the concern I have is when I hear there's criminal activity, I personally have not seen anything in the paper, and I have, don't know if we've ever checked with the sheriff's office.
I've asked the sheriff's department four times for a report of any incidents.
Right. And I, I know of one particular establishment that has been around for three to four years has done a lot of charity work. They have donated to many charities, Habitat, Feed the Poor, Stuff the Bus. So I guess, my only concern is, there's too many out there right now. And I'm in favor of this moratorium so that we can get answers. There are a lot of questions today, but I also think that we need to explore, the four people, the four businesses that have their application in the process, have most likely expended some funds, personal funds or company funds, and, and on that basis, instead of causing some legal issues and being challenged, I would, I would say let them come in. I think what's going to happen is eventually, if they don't make it, they're going to close. We already saw that. So let's have a moratorium, let's follow this draft two of this proposal, and if no more questions, I move for adoption.
Actually, I have questions.
Okay.
Mr. Meeker.
My, my question is, do we agree with staff's finding in this agenda item? They either do have these problems discussed in the whereas sections, or they don't. If they don't have those problems.
Then why is it in there?
Then why is it in there? Then take it out. If, if, but if I'm, if I read this and believe what I read here, I can't in good conscience allow these kind of things to continue to proliferate in Palm Coast and cause a danger to, or an increase in criminal activity or the secondary impacts located with it, I just can't. So what's, what's the truth on this deal?
Mr. Lewis.
With respect to the fact that there is no activity that you can see at the moment, or there's nothing, these are all new places and they came from someplace. And from what I've been reading, this is the favorite place to come. There have been other places and they've been chased out of town or they've been banned. And because we have nothing on the books and we have no restrictions, why not Palm Coast? I, I'm thinking that perhaps we don't want to have something come here because we don't want to take the necessary steps or we don't want to bite the bullet. And I say bite the bullet and say, stop, stop this point forward, but I'm saying even more than that, I'm saying, I don't care if you already have invested
Delete this.
Into whatever your business might be, the chances are you came from someplace else or you, or you're going to attract other people to come here because this is a fertile area. So I prefer myself the, the first document that we received. I may be not the majority, but that's my, that's my, my thinking. They're coming and they're going to keep coming. And if we don't do something serious and something definite, they're going to keep on coming.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morgan.
This is just a moratorium, and I think that's all we're asking. Let's give our staff and give the attorney the opportunity to answer some of these questions because right now, we're kind of shooting in the dark. And we're not really sure what it is we're afraid of, what is not, we don't have a report from the sheriff, what the crime activity has been around these internet cafes or whatever. So to do the moratorium in 180 days or less, if we determine that it's not an issue, then it goes away and back to business as usual, but at least we can slow down the process and give our staff and attorney the opportunity to take a look at it.
Mr. Meeker raises the question about the whereas clauses. It would seem to me, if you'd all look at the second version, the first three are generic. The fourth says, whereas the city council, Palm Coast, finds these activities may operate essentially as gambling establishments. I think it, they may. Which can negatively impact the public health, the gambling can negatively impact the health, public safety, welfare. That clearly is true, given the state's position on gambling. The state legislature has consistently opposed expansion of gambling, and this is the very reason they cite. So I think that whereas clause gives us reasonable cause to enact this. The second, next one, whereas other nearby areas has experienced a similar influx. Well, that certainly is true, no question about that. The next one, whereas Florida law enforcers have observed criminal activities on and around the properties, including not limited to robberies and burglaries. That's been reported in the paper. It has not been reported in Palm Coast, that's why we are attempting to act proactively. Skip the next two wherases, and the next one says, whereas time is needed in which to research the nature and scope. We're not making a definitive answer. We're, we're essentially agreeing with Mr. Meeker, well, I'm not sure. I, I need some time to look into this, I need to gather more data. So, that being the case, I, I think there's, there's a rational basis for us to adopt this, this temporary moratorium. The issue is, do you, do you impact the existing and the four that have, as Mr. Land, they've already bought the computers, they've already remodeled the building, they've already, they're ready to open. I wouldn't ask Mr. Reichman to speculate, but it would seem to me that if I were that poised to open my business and you now tell me I can't, I bet you I'd be looking for compensation from the city through the legal process.
Well, I've already expressed my concerns, Mr. Mayor, and, and, you know, my, my job is, is to try to give you the best possible advice, you know, and give, and I'm providing that, that warning. There are, I can, there are different vehicles that would be possible, legal vehicles would be possible for, for arguments to be made.
Any additional council comments, questions?
Move.
Ms. Stefano, you were prepared to make a motion.
Yeah, I move that we adopt this resolution.
Which resolution?
The resolution. The resolution that was redlined and outlined for the 120 days.
180.
180.
180. Sorry about that.
This is the resolution that would permit the seven existing to stay open, would permit the four that have specifically applied for this purpose to open.
And no new ones.
But nothing other than that.
That's correct.
Okay, just so we know which resolution we're voting. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion on the motion? This is a resolution. All in favor of the resolution? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Meeker?
No.
Councilmember DiStefano?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
No.
Councilmember Mormon?
Yes.
Mayor Nett?
Yes.
Mayor, this motion is passed three to two.
Let's take a five-minute recess. Clearly, this is a work in progress, this issue of internet cafes. I think you can read the article that's on the internet that several of our legislatures own them or are part owners of them. Several of our legislatures have received substantial contributions from them. I think it's important that we, as elected officials, we as citizens, communicate with our legislators in Tallahassee. And whether you're in favor of these puppies or gin 'em, I think we need to tell them that they need to take definitive action. This is a situation where the state clearly can set forth preemptive legislation. They... If you remember several years ago, we had a discussion about convenience stores and security therein. The state had passed preemptive legislation saying you cannot do anything about it. Well, they can do the same thing here, come down on one side or the other this issue, but do so so that we're not left alone.
They were right there on red light cameras. They're right behind us. Right behind us.
Gathering up the revenue.
Gathering up the revenue without doing a darn thing.
Anyway, so much for my editorializing. Agenda item number 10, resolution approving a sub-grant, CDBG grant. Mr. Landon.
Mayor, City Council, this is another one of our Prosperity 2021 programs that we went after federal grant dollars to help people rehab their home. This is one of the elements of Prosperity 2021 is to help stabilize our neighborhoods, help make sure that they stay healthy and prosperous, and helping people improve their property is all part of that. And Bo's going to give you the details. You've seen this, but I thought it was very important that the public have an opportunity to see, another opportunity out there for people that have homes that maybe need a little repair or rehab. Bo, take it from here.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. The Community Development Block Grant is a $750,000 housing rehabilitation grant that you have in front of you today. The concept of the program is it would benefit homeowner-occupied units where rehabilitation is necessary. There's some code issues with the house. Typically, thought process is the older homes where the home is deterioring, and the homeowner has no funds or ability to repair. These would be typically folks on fixed incomes with limited resources. And not only benefits the homeowner, but of course, the neighboring units and also local contractors that can bid on this work. Just some key points of the program. This is the grant budget, about $617,000 towards housing rehab. It's estimated at 10 homes. That's a low estimate. It just depends on the amount of repairs needed for each of the homes that are identified. $20,000 towards temporary relocation, if necessary, when the construction takes place, and then $112,000 towards the administration of the grant. The beneficiaries, they must meet income limits, must be owner-occupied, have clear title insurance, and to be a qualified unit. And then, the way the subsidy is secured in this program is through a soft-second mortgage, that's a 0% zero-interest loan, but just there to make sure that the homeowner continues to meet the terms of the mortgage in the program and make sure they're not using it to enrich or flip the home. And then, the bidding and contractors will take place through local recruitment, and it'll be a fair and open bidding process. The grant agreement that you have there today is with the state of Florida and through the Florida Department of Community Affairs. It's a two-year term to carry out the program, and outlines numerous federal and state regulations, includes a grant budget, and then a work plan for the program. As Mr. Landon states, consistent with our City Council goals for focusing on those neighborhood areas, consistent with Prosperity 2021 and keeping Palm Coast beautiful, and encouraging homeownership and reinvestment in those homes, and City staff recommend approval. And just a note for the public, because I've received about 15 phone calls already about how to apply for the program. We still have red tape if City Council approves the grant today. We still have to go through our environmental review process with the state and federal government and some other program requirements, and so we anticipate the application cycle opening up in December of this year. And with that, I'm here to answer any questions.
Council questions?
I have one.
Mr. Lewis.
And only because someone asked me, I didn't have the answer, so I have to ask you. It says rehab. And we're talking primarily of rehabbing homes and then selling those homes to other people.
No.
Not this program.
No. Well, that's what I want clarification on.
Okay. Well, the Neighborhood Stabilization Program, which I think probably the question was referring to, is the program the city is operating where we purchase foreclosed homes through developer partners, renovate those homes, and resell them. This program is different in the fact that it's rehabilitating, rehabilitating a home that's already owned by the homeowner. So it may be an older home where they've paid off the mortgage, but they're on social security and fixed income, and the roof needs to be replaced, or there's windows or other housing quality issues that are with the home. So this is different. This is going to be a home where the homeowner actually lives in the home already.
And they have to stay there for...
Bo, do they do appliances also? Refrigerators, stoves, sinks, bathtubs, toilets? Or are they just doing structure?
It's anything that would be not only just the building code, which our standard building code, but also there's housing quality standards, meaning you have to have a place to store food, a refrigerator. You have to have a place, you know, running water and a place to use the bathroom, and there's a whole list of criteria, more than just the basic level, is it a safe structure? Is it, can you live in it? So yes, it will address some of those issues. And also, it does address energy efficiency when we do replace things like windows or, you know, the roof and insulation. It will upgrade the home to make it a little more affordable for the homeowner.
Aside from the house itself, what about the ground maintenance?
Um...
You mean landscape?
Landscape? If it's a code-related issue, it can replace those. So like code trees and things like that, sprinkler systems, no, things like that.
Not sprinkler system, but grass growing too tall and that sort of thing, and they're not being kept the way it should be kept.
Absolutely.
And how many years, 10 years, do they have to live in it?
It's up to 15 years. It depends on the amount of money. If it's a low amount of money, it's just 10 years. As you get to the $60,000 limit, then it goes to 15 years. And years 11 through 15 are gradually forgiven over time, but you have to at least 10 years is the bare minimum. And that's consistent with the Neighborhood Stabilization Programs, so same type of terms.
Other council questions? Open the meeting to the public, any from the public who wish to be heard on agenda item number 10.
I just want to make sure of one thing. If this home is owned and rented, can the owner apply for the same grant or no?
My understanding is it does not apply to rental units.
No, it does not. It has to be homeowner-occupied. They have to maintain a home state exemption on the property, or they'll be in default of the second mortgage.
Because the county has got the same grant only for renters, so I just wondered if that's included in it.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Next speaker. Next speaker. Seeing no one approach the podium, we close the public portion meeting, come back to council. Additional questions, comments, or a motion?
Move adoption.
Second.
Moved in second, and all in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries that objection. Agenda item number 11, resolution approving a FiberNet broadband access agreement with Flagler County School Board. Mr. Landon.
Mayor, City Council, this is actually a bid process that the city has been awarded by the school district to connect all their schools with our FiberNet. You know, our fiber optic lines have connected all, or most all of our facilities together, and it's saved us tens of thousands, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars a year. We are now offering that opportunity to the school district. There is a charge to them for all their schools. It's a little over $200,000 a year is what we will be receiving in revenue, so it will help our FiberNet, which has turned into a enterprise fund, if you will. And it substantially reduced the cost for the school district, so it's really a win on both sides at this time. The investment that we have to make to make those connections is estimated to be between $350,000 and $400,000. It's a three-year contract, so it's less than a two-year return on investment. Those are, you know, hard dollars, very, very much dollars that can be accounted. And after that, then it becomes profit for that enterprise fund that we have established here in the community. So it is a good business deal, in our opinion, but it's also good public policy to keep those dollars local, reduce costs for both school district and city, and we would strongly encourage your approval of this. My favorite attorney has pointed out that the actual agreement is our standard agreement with some tweaks that have been made to it because it's not your standard small business. There's some differences. And their attorney hasn't looked at it, so there's probably going to be some minor tweaks. If they're major, they're going to have to come back to you, but just wanted to point out that there might be some minor legal adjustments. But the basic principles of the agreement are already in place as a result of the bidding process, and not a whole lot of changes that can be made at this point. But he did ask me to point that out to you.
Council questions? Mr. Lewis.
Can... I know the answer, but I won't ask it anyhow. Can we be charged with unfair business practices?
Absolutely not.
It was an open bid process.
Open bid process, the second year that they've done it. Last year, we did not win. Bright House did, so I don't believe that that is an issue at all, from my point of view.
Additional council questions? I would presume that once we make this initial investment in infrastructure, that is hard infrastructure that would certainly give us a competitive bidding advantage three years hence.
Absolutely, and also, it extends our lines in some areas we aren't now, so it could pick up some other customers. So yeah, it just makes a good business sense all the way around.
So open the meeting to the public, anyone who wish to be heard on agenda item number
Louis McCarthy, Palm Coast. Is there a time at which you have to have this equipment in there, or the cables set up? Is there a timeframe involved which would shorten the, you know, within the contract? I know you signed it at one point, but I'm sure it would say from, you must have it in such and such a timeframe. Thank you.
We'll get an answer. Next speaker. Seeing no one approach the podium, we come back to the council. But first, does the contract address the issue of setup time or installation time?
Yes. Well, first of all, the contract is effective July 1. That's when they will switch from their current provider to the city. Secondly, though, is it's a, being a school district, it's imperative that the switchover happens during the summer when the schools are closed. So that summer window is critical to them, obviously, and we understand that and have made that commitment that this switchover will happen during the summer when the schools are closed and all the testing and everything, so that when the teachers, administration come back to work, you'll be ready to go.
And our IT department is confident they can meet that timeline?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Mayor. Mr. Meeker.
I just want to say that, in my opinion, FiberNet is the best long-term vision-based opportunity invested on by not only this council, but past city council members that I can think of.
Forward-thinking, and it's extreme. Additional council questions, comments, or a motion?
I'll motion to approve the agenda item if there's no additional comment.
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries that objection. Agenda item number 12, appointment of five members to the redistricting commission. You have in your binders the five names submitted by the four council mayor.
What? Just a second, I'm trying to get mine.
It's on your agenda.
Shake it harder. No, I got it here.
Okay, I move that we accept these nominations.
I second.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries that objection.
Mr. Mayor, for the public, would you please read the nominations?
Albert Cunningham, Clint Smith, Louis McCarthy, Patricia Bottoms, and Chris Vornedram. Those have been pointed to the redistricting. Is it a commission or is it a committee?
Commission is what the...
Charter calls it.
Mayor, speaking of the charter, if I could highlight one question that came up regarding this process. Recently, the, recently, we, there was something in a local newspaper that said the county, Flagler County, would be starting this process towards the end of this year, meaning trying to get it done before 2012. So I've been asked, well, why is a city in a big hurry, and why is this going to impact districts for this coming election? And the answer to that is, is because we have a charter that very specifically spells out that we have to do this and have it completed, I believe it's 90 days prior to the regular city election. So based on the charter, you don't have an option of delaying this. Then the question comes up, well, are the, it says after the official census or the certified census data comes out. I got, it's interesting, I got the book from the state just yesterday, and we have confirmed that, yes, the census data that's out is the official certified census data. And then that kicks in the requirement for us to move forward with this. So I wanted to make it very clear that this isn't something we're doing now because we want to, but we're doing this now because we legally have to. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's see, we approved agenda item 12. This brings us to the consent agenda. Consent agenda items 13 through 17. Does anybody wish to remove anything from the consent agenda? Mr. Lewis.
15.
Number 15. Anyone else wish to remove anything? If not, can I have a motion to approve consent agenda items 13, 14, 16, and 17? Still motion?
Second.
Moved in second, and all in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries that objection. Agenda item number 15. Mr. Lewis.
I'm pulling this only because I want the council and anyone who's listening to also have the benefit of my discussion with the city attorney as to how these things come about and the process. And I think that many people, or some people, may not understand how this is done between the two bodies, code enforcement and the city, and that sort of thing. So I would like the city attorney to explain to the council what he explained.
Certainly, Councilmember Lewis. The chapter 162 of the Florida statutes is the Florida law that has been codified in our Code of Orders, is dealing with the process for code enforcement. And if you are violating some of our codes, and you go before the Code Enforcement Board, and they have found that in fact that your property is in violation, they will enter a standard order which will say that you've got to fix the problem within a certain number of days, and if you don't do that, then a fine can start. So that's step one. The next step is that if, for whatever reason, you don't or can't, or the problem is not fixed, then there'll be another hearing. It's called a mass hearing. And at that hearing, a fine will be imposed. It'll be quantitative. It'll be quantified. It'll be the per diem fine that was set up in the first order times whatever the number of days that the property continued to remain in violation. That second order imposes a fine. Now, that fine belongs to, if you will, that's a way of saying it, it still is within the jurisdiction of the Code Enforcement Board. It belongs to the Code Enforcement Board because it's still a fine. And Chapter 162 says that at that point in time, if the property owner has come into compliance and wants to have the fine reduced, they can go back to the Code Enforcement Board. Now, there's this, there's the next step, and that is that a fine is not a lien. Those are two different things. When the second order, that order which created, actually quantified the amount of the fine, if and when that is recorded, a certified copy of that is recorded in the public records, then that becomes a lien, just like anything else that's recorded in the public records. You can have a mechanic's lien, you can have a second mortgage. They're all liens on titled real property. The legal significance of that is when that, that fine becomes a lien through the recording of that, that second order. At that point in time, the Code Enforcement Board loses its power to reduce the fine. It then becomes an asset of the governing body of the, of the local government, which in this case, of course, is your city council. So when you deal with reductions or satisfactions, that goes to the city council. And the city council, in this case, in agenda item number 15, is approving just what, just that. There was a piece of property that had a lien on it. It was a recorded order, which had been a fine, turned into a lien. And for the circumstances that were set forth in the agenda item, it made sense, for lack of a, just to oversimplify, to go ahead and reduce that amount that was in the recorded lien. And this is coming to council on the consent agenda for their approval because we have jurisdiction and the code board doesn't.
Are there any counsel, additional questions on this agenda item? Since we did remove it from the consent agenda, would anyone from the public wish to be heard on agenda item number 15? Signal approach the podium. We'll close public portion of meeting and back to council. Is there a motion, Mr. Lewis?
No.
In a second?
Second.
Moved in second and all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries that objection. Brings us to public participation portion of the meeting. Any from the public wish to be heard on any item not on today's agenda? Please give us your name. Limit your contribution to three minutes.
Charlie Erickson, Palm Coast. Would you, since we haven't heard much recently, would you please bring us up to date on the present status of the proposed city hall information that we're requesting and review? In addition, will there be a question on the municipal ballot this November allowing the resident voters to voice their opinion, yes or no, on a new city hall? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Lynn Weaver, 5719 North US Highway 1. First of all, I'd like to thank Stormwater Management, Mr. Moden, and your IT department for fixing the problems that I had brought to you. They've taken care of those. But at the close of your last meeting, I was kind of disturbed with what I felt to be misleading information that was presented to the council. You guys have a hard job to do, and I feel that you should be getting upfront, honest information. You know, you guys seemed a little surprised with the whole cattle issue, that you'd had a super vote and didn't realize that you were the ones that let the cows in. You know, I have an issue. I wrote Mr. Tyner a letter about the zoning on my property. I've not gotten a response for over a month. Sent a certified letter to Mr. Abreu. His is a little more difficult because I want to know if city code applies or is it just a jumping off ground for us to make changes? You know, I'm angry that I was fined for a barbed wire fence and now we have nine miles of fence sitting over on the property between Palm Coast Parkway and Tansas. If you do the math on them, that's over $200,000 in fines that could be applied for other things, and it's an illegal fence. Mr. Nets, or Mayor Nets, I'm sorry, asked a question at the end of the meeting of Mr. Abreu, and he indicated that, you know, state, the only state law that prevails defenses that we have to keep our livestock behind it. It's strictly city code. We have a crappy code, but you know what? All the rest of us have dealt with it. There's a problem with it. You know, Mr. Landon stated that this particular property is eligible for the ag use exemption because it's a contract. The city does have a DRI contract. I read the whole thing. The last sentence in it says ag use permitted. That would allow a landowner to make money on property while they were waiting to develop. But we have a very interesting situation there. Can you imagine going to a kennel to leave your dog and having the kennel pay you? And that's exactly what's happening on that property. Palm Coast is a laughing stock because of that. The developer is actually paying the owner of the cows to have the cows there. It's not an economically viable venture. And it's perceived as a way, as you put it, substantial contributions. And they're assumed that they're going to you all because you're the ones that voted the cows in. Now, I don't know if you realize, that highly developable, valuable property is being taxed at $243 an acre for timber. If you go to Kevin Hunter's site, the appraiser's office, you'll see the standards. Mr. Landon stated that this was a temporary use because it isn't a DRI. That is not only unfair to the people of Palm Coast, it's also illegal. That property fails to meet five of the standards that are required of us. Those laws were put in, the ag use. Ag use is not ag district. It is not ag zoning, therefore not eligible for barbed wire. It is ag use permitted, does not qualify you for an ag use exemption. You have to have timber plans, you have to have best management practices, you have to have conservation plans. Those laws were put in to protect people like myself who have a track of land that has become valuable because of the development around us. It allows us to maintain our properties without all of a sudden having our land that we bought for $600 an acre being worth $100,000 because development's coming our way. The city is breaking the law by allowing this to continue, and no one seems to step forward. You know, when it's all said and done, you all are going to be the ones that are accountable. You have another problem. Somebody has very smartly managed to build the entire holding facility for this livestock adjacent to the well. Cattle have a particular disease that can end up in our drinking water. I would prefer that that not happen, even though I have a well. I don't know what the problem is. I mean, you guys work hard. Our staff seems to be confident. I know that there's not a lot of agriculture in this area, but we're not getting the job done, you know? So this is my last time moaning and groaning at you. I think that the citizens of Palm Coast are being treated unfairly. You're giving away fine money, you're giving away property tax money, and then you're asking the citizens of Palm Coast to step up and make the difference.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Jack Cowell, Palm Coast. Now is the budget time season. So I would like to ask the commission or the council, when you're going into your budget, right, if you're going to consider laying off anybody that's, any of the workers, first consider doing away with the yellow shirt donations, you know, a new cover for this and a new cover for that, you know, $40,000 for this and $40,000 for that. You know, let's stop giving away the money and let's hold on to our employees, you know? It's budget time. Cut and cut and cut, right? Get rid of all the stuff that's unnecessary. And if we're going to have to pay to keep the tennis courts going, then increase the price of the, whatever it is. So. Now, I've got one more question. If you're redistrict, right, do you have to, does, do the people that are running for office, does that change that situation?
Thank you. Next speaker. Next speaker. Signal approach the podium. We'll close the public portion of the meeting. All right, let's see if we can get some answers to questions. Current status of the, for want of a better word, consultants on a new city hall?
We have gone through the process of, it's actually a request for qualifications for both the architect and construction management companies. We are working with them to develop a scope of services. That scope of service are working towards trying to get the additional information city councils ask for without a great deal of cost. There was some upfront information. They understand the process is not going to be fast, and they also understand that city council has not in any way approved this project, so we are not signing a contract or not trying to negotiate a contract that says, oh, we have to do this, but just initially try to bring some more information upfront. But it is not a high priority right now, and we're not moving very quickly on it, to tell you the truth.
And since there is no proposal, there will be nothing on the ballot relating to city hall.
Right, right.
There's nothing been proposed. Ms. Weaver's concerns about fence code issues, the proximity of cattle holding and our wells, and the allegation that we are functioning in an illegal fashion.
Well, I, I think I'm going to take an approach of agreeing with Ms. Weaver on a lot of things. You know, city staff didn't particularly like the idea that the cows were going out there. We know why they're there. It's called an ag exemption. It reduces the property taxes substantially. The city doesn't have anything to do with that exemption, and to tell you the truth, it doesn't seem very fair. But it is, like a lot of other loopholes in the system, we do not know how we can step up and say, you can't jump into that loophole that allows for the ag exemption if you go through the state, county process to get that. As far as us operating illegally, that I cannot agree with. Yet, the DRI did allow them to have the ag uses on a temporary basis until there was demand to develop the property, actually not an unusual situation. The well fields, we do have a well field protection zone, and it has been fenced off so that there is a, actually a fenced area around that. I'm trying to find, Richard, I'm, hopefully you confirm that that's happened because that's what I heard was going on, is that we have ordinances that says you have to have a certain area perimeter around it that you can't have these, and they had to fence that off. I don't have, I mean, those are about the only answers I have. It's not a matter of we liking the situation, but there's only so much government can do as far as controlling those property rights. In this case, this is part of that property owner's property right.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but it's the county property appraiser who determines whether a property is eligible for agricultural exemption. Is that not correct?
I know it's either the county or state. I believe it's the county. I know it's not the city. We don't have anything to do with it. And there's certain criteria, and they've got to fill out certain forms, but Mayor, I think you're right. I've never really got involved in it, but it all has to do with that, the property tax process, and the city doesn't get directly involved in that, those classification or the appraised value and what those exemptions are. The property appraiser's office is responsible for that.
Okay. I think we all heard Mr. Carroll's charge on the budget. Question for the attorney. Does redistricting potentially impact people who have already filed, begun campaigning, so on and so forth?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Depending on where the district lines are drawn.
Well, when I say yes, it does, it may. The point is, is that our Charter indicates that it will affect the election, so it will affect the candidates. They'll need to live in their district, to the extent that it, I, we will know the report from the commission. My understanding, working with the city clerk, is that we're going to be proposing a time schedule, which has already been worked on, that will create a fast track, if you will, for lack of a better term, to get this report done so we can bring a proposed, so that the commission can bring back to this council its report and recommendations in such a timely fashion that this council can then, you know, with an appropriate amount of time, review their recommendations, either follow them or modify them, put them into an ordinance that will create new districts, if that's appropriate, and that will be done in such a fashion that it will not prevent candidates to continue to run if they have the ability to, based upon the districts that are up for election and depending upon where they reside after the redistricting.
Mayor, I need to add one thing else. Also, there's a petition process, and so those people who have got petitions signed for people who are in their district need to be careful because they may not be in your district when it comes to that point. So those people who have already started working need to stay tuned as to how this impacts them. Qualifications for this election does not formally start until 1st of August. So there's, that's why we have to have it done before August. But those people who are interested need to stay in tune with it so we make sure that there aren't any surprises come August 1st.
Thank you.
And they all did hear the discussion about, we don't have a lot of choice about whether we're doing redistricting or not.
If I could add to that, this is a good reason to have elections with the county, state, federal.
Same time.
Same time, so that you get this done during the odd number year, 2021 now, next time, and then your election is the year following, and you don't have this confusion. Having municipal elections on odd year, that off year does cause these kind of problems, so.
Okay. Discussion by city council of matters not on the agenda. Mr. Mormon.
Did we set a date for goal setting? I know we were going to do it on the 24th, then we stressed that. Did we ever come up with a new date?
Yes, we are, you get a holiday next week. There is no workshop next week because it's a five Tuesday month, and we will have the regular workshop agenda on the 31st, two weeks from today. And we agreed last workshop that we'd count on that being an all-day session, and then we would also add the goal-setting discussion, kind of the pared down on the 31st.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Lewis.
Nothing.
Mrs. DeStefano.
Now, I'd just like to extend thanks to Ray Britt for his fine presentation, and I look forward to the next two presentations.
You just don't look forward to the budgeting process.
Yeah, that's a big one.
Mr. Meeker.
Nothing, sir.
And I have nothing other than for those of you who may have an interest in the Fish and Wildlife proposal to enact speed zones on the Intercoastal Waterway, there will be a hearing before the county commission at 1:00 PM at the GSB to receive the report of Fish and Wildlife staff and to receive any public comment that might be appropriate. Discussion by city attorney of matters not on the agenda.
Nothing further, Mr. Mayor.
Discussion by city manager of items not on the agenda.
Just a couple of quick updates. The Business Assistance Center is open. We will have, you get invitation for a little reception so the public can come say hello. But Joe Roy, who is the area manager, actually with the Small Business Development Center, who's housed there, is open for business and is already getting some customers, so that's good news. Also, just very proud of Arbor Day again, great, great city event. Came across with a larger crowd again. This time, we had the 5K run and the fun run, and I now know why they have different age categories, because they really need to allow the young guys to win, because all the older guys are the ones that actually beat them, but they don't want to have them in the same category because it bruises their ego too much. So some of my young staff, my hat's off to them for running, but it was actually kind of, I thought, exciting to see that some of the older guys put them in, no, win. Mayor, that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Mr. Meeker.
I think it's a motion to...
Excuse me, one moment. Mr. Lewis has a question.
Of course, Mr. Mayor. I meant to bring it up earlier. At the summit, they talked about the Business Center at the summit.
Yes.
And I got the impression they were claiming it as one of theirs, but I need to make sure that we identify ours as what it is, and it's the Palm Coast Business Center.
Yes, it's the Palm Coast Business Assistance Center, and it is... Yes, it's the Palm Coast Business Assistance Center, and it is funded by Palm Coast taxpayers because that issue came up. The, if you will, the small business expert or a small business coach or, his actual formal title is area manager, is an employee of the University of Central Florida as part of the Small Business Development Center. It is a regional network. That was very important, that we be part of the regional network to bring in those resources. Historically, we've always been part of the Volusia Flagler area, and now we have our own representative, so we no longer have to send our small businesses down to Volusia County to get those resources. It is, the Business Assistance Center is not just Mr. Roy. I mean, a one-person shop doesn't work well, includes city staff. It's our business tax receipt. We've located Bo down there to help from a city staff standpoint, and so you've got four individuals down there. Three of them are city employees, and one of them is a university employee. Because it's a regional effort, Mr. Roy cannot say, well, we only have to be a Palm Coast business because it's part of that regional network, but his focus will be businesses in Palm, in Flagler County. Obviously, majority of those businesses are on Palm Coast, and majority of his time will be spent where the majority of the businesses are, and city staff's focus will be on Palm Coast businesses. So it's a good cooperative effort. It is, I think it's one of those that if anybody tried to do it by themselves, it would be much more costly because of overhead and all those things that go along with starting up an office, that we're able to cut that cost. And I, we are, at least from our standpoint, we're not focusing on, you know, where your business is as much as trying to help small businesses, trying to help create those jobs one at a time. The same thing we've talked about all along, that this whole center is geared towards, if every small business were to hire two people, we'd be a whole lot better off than that one big home run. And that's what this is all about, and it's not about where political boundaries are to us. And so I appreciate you bringing that up so we could clarify that this is, trying very hard to help our local small businesses.
Mr. Meeker?
I'd like to motion to adjourn meeting.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you for your participation.